Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, October 17th, 2018. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have no presentations this morning and no one signed up for public comment. Anyone come in that wants to make public comment that didn't sign up? Okay, so we'll move right into our consent agenda and Commissioner Cameron, I understand it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the consent agenda, I'll move the first item under the Clerk's office, approve an order appointing Bob Riggy, Jennifer Sazaki, Paul Allen, Gerald Baumann, Victoria Palmer, and Jack Yarborough to the Marion County Board of Property Tax Appeals with terms ending June 30th, 2018. Under Community Services, approve an order appointing Gladys Blum as an honorary member of the Marion County Children and Families Commission. Under Health, approve a lease agreement with Pioneer Trust, NA trustee in the amount of $366,290.56 for the Salem Foundation for leasing space used by Health and Human Services formerly used by Sheriff's Office at 3867 Wolverine Drive Northeast, Building F, Salem through June 30th, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, those items are approved. So under Action, our first item is under the District Attorney's Office and we have our new District Attorney Paige Clarkson here, Susanna Escobedo, is that correct? And Jane Downing. So, do you have PowerPoint presentation? Well then, would you please go over there, thank you. We're gonna be over the other place, Jane. All right. Yeah, the camera picks you up better there, so.
I hate to be off the camera.
That's true.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Paige Clarkson and I am in officially week three of my service as a District Attorney here in Marion County. It is my privilege to be here before you today for what is really one of the most important services we provide to this county with regard to the prosecution of domestic violence cases and in support of the proclamation supporting domestic violence awareness. With me today, as you mentioned, Commissioner, is Jane Downing from Center for Hope and Safety and our Victim Assistance Director, Susanna Escobedo, who, as you probably remember, recently replaced Kim Larson, who served for a number of years, and we're really excited to have Susanna on board with us in this new, her new role. She's been with us for quite some time, but now in her new role as Director. I wanted to just share, I guess, more of a personal message today with regard to domestic violence awareness. I've been a prosecutor in the District Attorney's Office here for over 20 years and started my career specializing in prosecuting domestic violence cases. And I can personally attest to you, they are some of the hardest things that we do in our office for a number of reasons. Much of that is just the sheer violence and the sheer terror that some of these victims experience with regard to these relationships in these cases. Much of it is related to how difficult the prosecution of these efforts are. Survivors of domestic violence suffer from a number of reasons why being cooperative with the prosecution is difficult for them. And yet, every day, we have a team of lawyers in our office who work with these victims, these survivors, who work with our amazing team of victim advocates in our Victim Assistance Division, and who work very collaboratively with Jane Downing and her folks at Center for Hope and Safety to provide a place where they can safely and securely report, and we can therefore attempt to hold their batterers accountable for what they have done. And I can personally tell you, having done these cases for a number of years, that there is a lot of reward in working with victims in that capacity, seeing them triumph over what is a very scary time in their lives, a very unsure time in their lives. And the work that we do here in Marion County, very collaboratively with our victim services that are provided, both in-house here in Marion County and with Jane Downing and her folks, that those services make those efforts possible every single day. And some of the cases that I handled as a domestic violence prosecutor live with me still and are some of the cases that have been the most indelible in my career as far as the relationships with victims, specifically watching them survive that process, get better, and be able to triumph over those really difficult situations. Very proud of the work that we do here in Marion County in those efforts, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you today in support of recognizing this month as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and the proclamation with regard to that. We do a lot of good work here and serve a lot of folks. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jane Downing to share a little bit more about her work with Center for Hope and Safety.
Good morning, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. We just appreciate so much that every year you recognize that this is an important issue for our community to take a look at, to talk about, and bring that awareness. And I have been honored to, for all these years, to work alongside really great District Attorneys and do this work collaboratively together, and I look forward to working with Paige in that same way and with Susanna, to be able to make sure that we are providing that upfront support so that survivors have no wrong door. If they want to go through a prosecution, they have great folks that we refer to every single day that help them, help them to be able to work with the prosecutors, to be able to bring those cases forward. And then if they don't want to report, they can come to us, and they can talk through any issues, they can figure out what's the best next step for them, they can get support. As you all know, we have a safe confidential shelter where we have hundreds of children and adults that stay with us every year, and we're able to provide that. Last year, as the proclamation will point out, we had over 26,000 contacts to our program. Over 7,000 people walked through our doors, which are just down the street, and so having us be so close to the District Attorney's Office and the court has made a huge difference. And that is three times the number of people that used to walk into our office in its former location. So, location, location, location. We're able to provide all those services in a collaborative manner in Marion County, and we are just excited to be able to start a fresh year of making sure that all of us are there together for the sake of victims in our community. So, thank you for this opportunity, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about what we're doing and how we're doing it. This commission has been a big part in making it possible for us to have an advocate every single day in the courtroom, and that individual has worked with thousands of people, and individuals that never reached out to us before are getting that help and support. And so, we thank you so much for Marion County making that possible for us to be able to have that advocate that is making a difference for individuals. So, thank you.
Good morning, thank you for having us here. I just wanna echo the sentiments of Paige and Jane, excuse me, of the importance of the collaborative work that we do together to support our victims. When I was working on putting together the numbers for the proclamation, it just kinda really struck me how much work is needed for us to support these victims that are going through these difficult cases. And what I really found impressive is that we do it seamlessly because we work together so closely, and I like to think that we have an advocate that's available for any victim at whatever stage in the process that they are at, that we can help them through that. And the importance, the numbers really spoke to me of the importance of the continued work and that we keep putting in our efforts and that we work together every day to make sure that we fill in any gaps that there are so that we can make sure that victims have somebody to listen to them whenever they're ready to be heard. And I'm just really excited to be here, thank you so much for having us and to be able to do this really important work that, you know, is huge in our community and definitely needs the recognition of something like this to speak to that. So, thank you so much.
Questions, comments?
You know what, Jane, I usually give this to Sheriff Myers, but I saw your numbers, I don't know how to relate them to other years, so my question is always, is it getting better, are we making it? I'm gonna take away some of your answers, 'cause usually you hear, well, we're more aware, the system works, it's well-known and well-thought-of, and that we don't tolerate this, but is it getting better?
And thank you, Commissioner. I think it's always difficult when you hear the numbers going up, you think, are we making a difference? And what actually is true is if you're doing it right, the numbers do continue to go up for a long time because that awareness needs to be built, people really need to come to know that they can have no wrong door, that they really can come and get that help and support. We need to make sure that, you know, our information is out there, and we've reached out to 30 small communities in Marion County, we're the only program of our kind in Marion County, so that's a lot of people to make sure they know that they can get that help and support. And so, we're doing all of that. Those numbers are going to go up before they go down. And so, communities where they say, oh, our numbers are going down, it's a really good thing, actually it's not. It's scary when they go down when you know you haven't reached everyone. Someday, and this is what we all do here, is we all work every day to put ourselves out of a job, and someday I wanna be able to come to you and say, we get to close our doors because we've done it, right? We've reached that point, we're just not there yet. There's still a lot of conversations to be had, there's a lot of individuals. These dynamics, as Paige mentioned, are very complicated, and so it's not as easy as just saying, well, I'm just gonna get out. There's a lot of pieces to that. Where do I go? How do I make it? With our housing crisis we have, how do I be able to afford, you know, affordable rent isn't affordable for the folks coming out and starting completely over. There's a lot of dynamics with that, and fear is always one of the biggest for the folks that we serve. And so, until we have the ability to be able to make it a really safe community in lots of different ways, and abusers stop making the choice to harm people, we're gonna still need to be there for a while. But I appreciate that you keep asking that question, how are we gonna know? How are we knowing that the sheriff is doing good work? Because their numbers go up, and that means they're reaching more people and they're helping more individuals in our community that need that. We're doing the same kinda thing. So, bear with us for a while as we keep drawing attention to something that is gonna take time to be able to really do a good job with it. Does that help?
I think that's better than the sheriff does. It just still tells me, we're going the right direction, but we haven't reached the crest.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jane, thank you for the work you do over there and obviously the DA's office. And I remember when I decided to run for County Commissioner five years ago, and I met with the sheriff and I met with Walt, and domestic violence is the number-one reason for their calls. And so, just that awareness, it's one of those things that we continue to work on, and I guess the comment I wanna really know is, did you bring nice purple scarves for all of us to wear? Because Sam said that John and I were twinsies today, and John and I need to put on a purple scarf, so we could really be twinsies.
Commissioner, I'll try to remember that for next year, bring a purple tie or something, you know, it would be a great time to wear that and draw that awareness.
I'll get my purple ribbon out and wear it, even though this is for October, I'll get my purple ribbon out and wear that for November.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, I just wanna add my thanks for you coming and bringing this forward. This is, what, the 16th one of these that I've done, and the last one here is Marion County Commissioner. So, it's a somber topic, certainly, and one that is concerning because it drives so much of not only the calls for Marion County Sheriff's Office, but also, I mean, we know what research tells us about the victims of domestic violence, the trauma that they suffer, the children in the situation witnessing domestic violence is now, what, it's a higher-level crime, is it a felony for, to commit domestic violence in the presence of a child? And yet, I don't know that that's a deterrent to people that are in the midst of that kind of anger or whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna call it, rage. So, I appreciate very much the work that you do, Jane, especially with the Center for Hope and Safety, and you have a beautiful facility now, but I think that you've always been at the forefront of doing training and raising awareness and helping victims do safety plans, and, you know, and I know you've got this dream that it's even gonna be grander and more facets to it than it even has now, and I just am so much in awe of the work that you do. And Susanna, I don't know that I have actually met you before, so, right, so maybe since I don't know you very well, if you could maybe speak a little bit to just your perspective having now taken over in terms of being in charge of victim services, and what are some of the, some of the needs that you still have and the pressures that you're facing and so on as you're working with victims?
Sure, absolutely, and thank you so much. So, I have been doing, working with victims and victim services for almost nine years now, and in that time, I have worked on domestic violence cases specifically for a long time. And, you know, we're speaking specifically of domestic violence cases, is the need to have somebody there for our victims is huge. We have, it's the busiest caseload that we have in our office for our advocates, we have our case manager, and she's so busy all the time, it's the busiest caseload. And so, I think that we could have five, six case managers completely on domestic violence, and it still wouldn't be enough. And because of the dynamics that go in with, when we're working with victims on these cases, is that they, they're going through such a difficult time, and we are asking so much of them to go through the system with us. And so, I think that resources is always a big thing for us, and then also working with underserved populations. That for me, I'm a Latina, and so for me, you know, that's close to my heart, and I know that the more we put the word out there of who we are and the resources that we have, more and more people are coming to our doors, and I think that's really important, but I think that we also need to be ready for that. And so, I think that for us as an office to get ready for that and to be able to offer those services that people are in so need of, I think is really important. And so, that's just some of the challenges that we see in our offices, but, you know, it's always, the numbers are kinda hard to look at when you look at them, but I completely agree with Jane that the more people know about us and that we're there to help and to serve, and the more that they're coming to our door, it's better. So, the numbers can be a little bit scary, but I think she's right in the sense that the more that people know about what we do and the dynamics of domestic violence, and they're aware of those things, they'll speak out and they will help when needed, and so that's, that's all, that's kinda all we can ask for.
Thank you. And Jane, if I could just kind of ask a question of you as well, so, when I was in court that day that we had that Casey Gwynn Alliance for Hope tour, and watching two women seek restraining orders, it just appeared to me, it was actually, I mean, it was so impressive, I mean, it's just as if it happened yesterday in terms of watching them and listening to what they had to say. I got the sense that they were sort, they had put up with a lot for a very long time, and then finally, they decided that this was kinda the, they were at the point where they needed to get a restraining order. So, I guess my question is, is that normal? I guess in terms of that people will wait for a very long time rather than kind of at the first sign? And then I know you've also talked about the fact about how it's, that the time that the woman makes the decision that she wants to leave, she's in the most danger, so can you kinda go over that again for people who might be listening?
Sure, thank you very much. So, I think one of the things that we don't realize is that this is a pattern of controlling coercive behaviors that happen over time, and so what you were seeing in that moment was probably the culmination of months or years of someone ultimately believing it's all their fault. Abusers will say over and over, it's because you did this, or it's because I'm stressed out, or, you know, it's because I'm angry about something, and what we know is it has nothing to do with anger, nothing to do with rage. It's because what they do is, very often, they're charming in the beginning, and you see this on television, when someone murders their entire family and they interview the neighbors, the neighbors all say the same thing, such a great person, never thought that that person would do that. It's because they've used that charm not only on the victim, but everyone around them, and so the victim feels like they have no one that they can turn to. They also get very isolated, they get isolated from friends and family, the abuser ultimately will say, you can't be around those people, I don't like it, you know, I don't like them, I don't want you to be around them. They will use jealousy to say that person, they will constantly accuse the victim of having an affair, you know, you're messing around with someone, and so it's all your fault. And most victims don't have the time, energy, or interest in having an affair, but think about constantly being accused of having one. They pull back, they become more isolated, they can be isolated geographically, so you have individuals who are miles away from anyone else, or the abuser moves them around from place to place over and over. They also use emotional abuse, so in the beginning, they're really wonderful to them and tell them how great they are, and then over time, tell them, you know, you're, no one will ever want you, you're no good. And then, of course, all the controlling behaviors of, you know, they can, they will want to control everything about that person, where they go, who they talk to, all of that, they believe they have a right to do that. And so, when you think about all that's been going on, and that victim comes to believe it is their fault, so they, it takes time for them to recognize this, this isn't a normal relationship, this isn't, you know, it isn't my fault, and all of that takes time, and for them to gain pieces, that's why that education piece that we do is so important, because we know that, you know, anybody in a relationship thinks that they're with a great and wonderful person if they're charming in the beginning. And so, you don't think about, you know, is that a sign that maybe something is happening? And when that control happens at first, it seems like, oh, I just don't want you to be with that person, 'cause I'm worried about you. So, it's so innocuous in the beginning, and then over time, it becomes more and more controlling. And so, what happens very often is by the time they realize or something happens, and most often, it's around the children, they see things happening in front of their children or to their children, that they go, I don't want this for my children. And so, that's very common, that we're gonna see them in the courthouse when they reach that moment of saying, this isn't right for my family, and so they take that step. And it is the most dangerous time for them. Of all the individuals that have been murdered in Marion County and in the state of Oregon and in the United States, the vast majority were either out or attempting to get out at the time that they were killed. And so, we always have to keep that in mind whenever we talk about, it's not as simple as just get out, you know, just go somewhere else, it really has to be a plan. And so, both of our offices, every single day and the prosecutors are working with, are safety planning, safety planning, safety planning, and that becomes so absolutely critical for them. So, I'm glad you're taking the time to be able to try to understand the dynamics, because you have folks listening today that this is affecting, you all have constituents that this is affecting in our community. And so, it's so important that we are taking the time to be able to talk about it, so I really appreciate that, 'cause I know you have very busy calendars, and I do want to say, if you'll allow me, to take just a moment, since this is our last time to do a proclamation together, Commissioner, I believe all the Commissioners are so incredible, but I do want to call out how much I've appreciated working with you. We've known each other for more than those 16 years, and I respect so much what you have done for this community and around this issue, and I've had the privilege to be able to work with you, and I want you to know that every single day you make a difference for victims and survivors in our community. So, you will be greatly missed in working on these issues together, and you, I always want you to remember what a difference that you make, and all of you can make that. I hope that there's a champion that comes on, and I know you've been a great champion for individuals reentering from, you know, that have committed some of these crimes, but you've also tried to really balance that with, how do we make sure we're providing similar services for victims? And I hope that the other Commissioners and whoever comes in your place will continue that work, 'cause we need that, we so, so need it in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and it's been great serving with you both on the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and I know we've worked together to, the state really identified the 10%, we went above and beyond before they cut our money, but still, I mean, that's been a great thing to be able to get that advocate that you were talking about earlier, and then the breakfast that's coming up on October 25th, sharing the proceeds of that with victims as well, I think that was a great idea that we had. But yeah, Social Services Advisory Board in Salem, I think, is where I met you back in the 1990s, and you were chairing that, and certainly were a great example for me to be able to learn exactly what the issues are and how to make a nonprofit go and really work, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Paige, congratulations, too. I think the last time you were here, we were saying goodbye to Walt, but, appreciate you're in your third week, so that's great.
She's got it all down now.
Yeah, yeah.
Pro now.
Excellent, excellent. All right, so we'll look for a motion then?
Madam Chair, if I could, I would, make a motion that we do approve a proclamation declaring October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 And as is our tradition, we will read the proclamation, so Commissioner Cameron, why don't you start?
In a matter of proclaiming October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, proclamation reads, whereas the impact of domestic violence extends beyond individuals reaching into families and communities, and whereas in the last year Marion County has experienced four domestic violence homicide crimes resulting in the deaths of seven victims, four of whom were children, and whereas the Marion County District Attorney's Office received 1,222 law enforcement reports of domestic violence last year, filed 970 domestic violence cases, and filed 71 juvenile dependency cases with domestic violence allegations, and?
Whereas Marion County Courts received 1,012 requests for protective orders last year, and whereas the Center for Hope and Safety received 25,526 contacts to their program last year and provided 5,633 nights of shelter, and whereas the Marion County Victim Assistance Division provided services to 1,604 victims of domestic violence last year, walking alongside them and giving them a voice in the criminal justice process, and?
Whereas we know as individuals, we can make a difference by speaking up and reaching out to help victims and survivors. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners proclaims October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and resolves to honor those who have died and acknowledge those who have survived by supporting meaningful services that create safety and hope for survivors in our community. And we had, do we wanna give one copy? You'll have to decide who gets to put the copy on you all.
Yeah, Jane, you know, you're looking for a champion to replace Commissioner Carlson, and I have to agree with all the things you said about her leadership, but next year we gotta get Commissioner Brentano to get out to the steps for safety, and he'll be the champion out there.
Awesome, we loved having you there, Commissioner.
We'll have a race.
Look forward to seeing, yes, all of you there.
Right, you can walk it. It's a 5K, you can walk it.
Not required, I've never done it, so it's not required.
It's fun, you can just come out and have fun.
See me off, yeah, high five.
Thank you.
Here, will you get one of those to Jane?
Yeah, let's do that, that one back to Kristy. All right, thank you very much. Let's move now to Public Works, Consider Adoption of an Ordinance Concurring in the City of Sublimity Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. Brandon Reich?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. On May 14th this year, the City of Sublimity held a first reading on an ordinance whose final reading will approve amending the city's urban growth boundary to add 10 acres of land, 9.6 acres for public use for a city park and maintenance yard, and .75 acres for residential use for an existing residence that we brought in. The city has requested the county The city has requested the county concur in the UGB amendment. On August 29th this year, the Board of Commissioners approved a resolution initiating amendments. And on October 3rd, 2018, the board held a hearing and after considering evidence in the record, concurred in the city's amendment directing staff to return with an ordinance consistent with their decision. Last week, the board scheduled adoption of the ordinance, and today, before the board is an ordinance that concurs in the City of Sublimity Comprehensive Plan Amendment to its urban growth boundary by approving amendments to the Marion County Comprehensive Plan for the City of Sublimity UGB by adding 10.34 acres for public land for a city park and maintenance yard and residential land for an existing dwelling. With that, I'm open for any questions you have.
Questions?
No.
So as you mentioned, we have, there's been a lot of process before it came to the board. We had a full public hearing on this and went through all of the information. So this is just coming back for the formalizing through an ordinance, correct?
Exactly.
All right. So for those listening, it's not that we don't care because we've already been through this.
A lot of work.
Right. So is there a motion then to adopt the ordinance?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt an ordinance concurring with the city, in the City of Sublimity Urban Growth Boundary Amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sublimity.
Yeah.
All right, now we have numbers three and four are with the Sheriff's Office. And Jeff Wood, and Sheriff, you're here, Under Sheriff, do you all want to come up? Okay? You just hear for moral support, Under Sheriff Clausen? Great. So this is consider approval of the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice for Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program. And we have Category 3 first and Category 1 second. And the dollar amount for Category 3 is $899,562 and Category 1 is $468,600. But since the program is the same for both grants with a little bit of a variation on the budget, I think we can talk about both of them together and then we'll make two separate motions since they're two separate items to approve them. Does that work? All right, Sheriff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Jason Myers. I'm Marion County Sheriff. Thank you for having us here today. These two grants, which there was a whole host of work put into them, support our LEAD program, which is our law enforcement assisted diversion program. And this program really looks at intervention and treatment first for persons who find themselves at the doorsteps of the criminal justice system with a possession of controlled substance charge. It's innovative, it's creative, and it tries to steer individuals away from the criminal justice system while addressing their needs. I'm going to have Commander Wood talk specifically about the two grants, but I would like to recognize, Madam Chair, your efforts as well as the DA's office, Salem Hospital, a number of nonprofit drug treatment programs, and community members that have made this program successful and get off the ground.
Commissioners, thank you for a moment of your time. Again, for the record, my name is Jeff Wood. I'm a Division Commander with Marion County Sheriff's Office, here to talk about our two grants. If I could take a brief trip down memory lane, about two to three years ago, after hearing about some of the successes of the LEAD programs in Seattle and New Mexico, a group had gone up to Seattle to explore those programs and really at the convenience of the Board of Commissioners, I wish you was still here, but Paige Clarkson, our District Attorney, group had convened to determine, can we do this locally in Marion County? The beauty of the program really is to divert those low-level, nonviolent drug offenders who are in need of supports and services to treat addiction. And what we had done is, yes, we do want to do a LEAD program. We do want to divert these people who can otherwise be moved from the criminal justice system into those social supports to treat those needs that they have. And we had received a grant from Lemon Valley Community Health for about $89,000 over the last year that had provided, one, program coordination, and two, a navigator. For anyone who is familiar with the LEAD program, that navigator is the linchpin to everything. Obviously, law enforcement is very key and vital for those initial referrals, but those navigators go into the field, they make connections with the people who are being referred, and provide what you've heard me call wraparound services. In federal parlance, it's now determined to be called recovery stabilization, but so those people can receive those services, so they can get addiction treatment, they can get those social supports, access to healthcare, so that those needs can be met and those people can be diverted from the criminal justice system. Specific to the grants that we received and that we hope to move on, Category 1 is a three-year grant that will provide some of those services that we do have in existence and will be able to continue to provide in terms of a program coordinator and two navigators, which will be staggered through the three years for full implementation. The grant also includes some of those recovery stabilization factors, includes housing, includes some recovery mentors, and access to healthcare and some of those individual needs that the participants will need in terms of a successful program. But it also includes things like office space and access to computer software, so we can report, track our outcomes. As you all know, anything that comes from the federal government requires an array of reporting and very stringent requirements, which we will need to provide to them. Specific to Category, sorry, Category 1 grant, that really is, in essence, the same things, a project coordinator and a navigator, but it is in within a two-year schedule for that full implementation. Again, I think the Sheriff said it very, very well. This is a collaborative effort. Candidly, we would not have this grant or both of these grants if not for Commissioner Carlson and her grant-writing expertise, but also the support from our District Attorney, Salem Police Department, Health and Human Services, and of course, the Sheriff's Office, all who want to participate and try to make this program be as successful as possible. What I will also say and close with is, in terms of governance of this program, of course, we will comply with the supports of the other departments within Marion County, comply with all the grant requirements and our grant coordinator within the Sheriff's Office, but also our Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council will serve as kind of the governing body, as a recommended policy group to the sheriff. These people are brought forward by the sheriff, appointed by the board, and represent all the entities that I described earlier. And so they will be receiving regular updates, quarterly reports, status in terms of the full implementation of the program. I will say it's been impressive right now in one year. I believe we're approaching 20 participants. The navigator, who I know the board and many people in the audience have met, is absolutely fantastic, and we truly hope to build on that positive momentum that we have right now. With that, I will close my testimony and of course be available for any questions.
And thank you for the kind words. I'm the grand editor, but you guys do the programs and make it happen, so it's wonderful. I do want to just clarify, Category 3 is the larger grant, and it's a three-year grant. And Category 1 is the smaller grant, and it's a two-year grant.
Correct. If I flipped that, my apologies.
Yeah. And then the agenda actually says it's through 2020 on Category 3, but I've got the award document here and it does say 2021 to make it the three-year grant. So when we do the motion, we'll want to, for Number 3, Category 3, the larger grant, it's through September 30th, 2021, just as an FYI. All right, so any questions?
Madam Chair, just, not a question, but when you said one year, I looked at the chair and I said, has it been a year already since Josh started? Has it?
It's been a little less than a year. We are looking to extend the grant, but that said, come January, February next year, we're at a full year of implementation.
Yeah. Amazing results. I know we get the updates at the meeting and what's going on, and you see Josh everywhere. He was out at the Steps for Safety run, and he's just everywhere in the community and doing just a really good job.
He's tireless, but he could certainly use some support, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
Well, and I think too, the thing that really drove us to do this is to look at the top 100 users of emergency room beds and jail beds that are cycling in because of these low-level crimes and say, okay, is there a better way to do this? And having Josh out on the street, connecting with people, connecting them to services, recognizing that these low-level arrests, once they get into the court system, just can take up enormous amounts of paperwork and cost and all of that, and is that really the best use of our tax dollars to do that? Or should we try to get folks so that they can reduce the harm in their drug use and their alcohol use and be able to live more meaningful lives? So it's good all the way around.
It is.
Commissioner, any questions that you have?
No.
All right. So Commissioner Brentano, you want to make the motion on Number 3?
Yes, I would. And I've noted your edit. So, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice for Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program, Category 3, System Level Diversion Project for $899,562 through September 30th, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Number, Category 3 is approved. Now Commissioner Cameron?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice for Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program, Category 1, First Responder Partnerships for $460,806 through September 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the second grant agreement for Category 1. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Then we go on to the next step, right? And see how it goes. Thank you. All right, we will be putting on our hats right now as the Contract Review Board. This is also under the Sheriff's Office. And these two items look like they're also, are they connected? Right. So first of all, we have to allow a reinstatement and then we actually approve the amendment, right? So item number one under the Contract Review Board is to consider approval of an order allowing the reinstatement of the Marion County Jail Food Service Contract. And Camber Schlag is here, and Tad Larson, and you are?
Camille Peterson, the Contract Specialist for the Sheriff's Office.
Oh, thank you. Okay, welcome. Camber, do you want to start?
I do. Good morning, Commissioners and members of the board. My name is Camber Schlag and I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager within the Finance Department.
Good morning. I'm Tad Larson, the Jail Commander for the Sheriff's Office.
And Camille Peterson, the Contract Specialist for the Sheriff's Office.
All right, so we need you to like, bite the microphone, okay?
I got a note here earlier that I wasn't doing it, so.
So you need to hear yourself echo through it when you talk.
Thank you. I'm good company then.
All right. Good morning. So we are before you this morning. The jail food services contract did expire on June 30th of 2018. The Marion County Public Contracting Rules do allow for a reinstatement of that contract within 90 days. And unfortunately, due to working with the vendor, we were unable to get that before you until this morning. So we are asking for an exemption from our rules for you to allow this contract to be reinstated. It will be reinstated until June 30th of 2019, at which that time we will be issuing a new contract to possibly a new vendor for the jail food services. We are in the midst of drafting that RFP now, and the goal is for that RFP to be released in January.
So according to the board order, you, we are 17 days beyond that 90-day mark? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And will you talk in the next one about what issues delayed it beyond the 90 days? Or do you want to talk about that now?
I can talk about that now. So basically, what ended up happening is we started our process in June to get this contract signed by the June 30th deadline. It did sit with the vendor. They needed to do some review, they've had some name changes, and it pretty much was a back and forth for quite a few months until we were able to get it resolved in October and then get it signed. Going forward, we will be more prompt with responding via email, via phone. We've also talked about getting the lieutenant and the commanders involved if necessary, if we find that we are unable to have success in working with the vendor. We also have not paid the vendor because we do not have an active contract. And once that contract is active, then we will be paying the invoices that are due to that vendor.
Is the vendor still providing food service during this interim time?
They are.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything you want to add to that?
No, I just apologize for the delay. So I think the added measures, this is actually a first for me where we've had a sitting contractor delay it by that much. We would never anticipated this with any of our renewals, so I think adding an extra measure or having a lieutenant as the contract manager intervene within the 90 days will probably resolve that in the future.
Okay, great. Questions?
If I could, so no issues of price or quality, quantity, et cetera, foods?
No, this is simply, they went through a third rendition of a name change or corporate changeover, and then during the last couple of months, the contract waiting for signatures sat with their legal counsel, according to our district rep.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Any questions?
Those food service providers can be a problem sometimes.
And you would know, right? Okay, Commissioner Brentano?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion we approve an order that reinstates the Marion County Jail Food Service Contract.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the order that reinstates the Marion County Jail Food Service Contract. And again, this is under our authority as the county's Contract Review Board. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, that is done. So now that we have reinstated it, we'll move to item number two, which is to consider approval of Amendment Number 7 to the contract for services with Avians, am I saying that correctly? And Elior Company for the Marion County Jail Food Services and extend it through June 30th, 2019, and also add $1,103,400. Camber?
Yep. So we would, if we can get this reinstated, then the food, jail food services can continue on through June 30th. As I stated before, we have begun drafting a new RFP. We hope to issue in January and then issue that new contract beginning July 1st.
So their old name was easier to say, I can tell you that. All right. Commander, anything you want to add?
No.
Nope. All right. Questions? All right. Commissioner Cameron, you want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number 7 to the contract for services with Avante Avians and Eleanor, gee, Elior? Eli is, Eor is my favorite character, so Elior.
That's not Eor, but go ahead.
Elior, for the Marion County Jail Food Services to extend through June 30th, 2019, add $1,103,400.
And I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Amendment Number 7 to this contract. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, we are done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So now we will go back from being the Contract Review Board to being the Marion County Board of Commissioners. We've completed our action agenda and we will open a public hearing. It's after 9:30 when it was noticed. This is under Public Works and it's a public hearing to consider appeal of hearings officer's decision denying conditional use 18-030 Lee, Clerk's File Number 5780. And Joe Fenimore, will you introduce this hearing to us?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a request for a conditional use to establish a bed and breakfast in at the home occupation on a 9.4 acre unit of land in a special agriculture zone located on Valentine Road South in Salem. On May 14th, the Hunting Director issued a decision approving the request of two conditions. On May 23rd, that decision was appealed by property owners in the area that opposed the approval. Hearings officer conducted a public hearing on June 21st, left the record open until July 5th, and on September 7th issued a decision denying the request. On September 24th, the applicant appealed that decision, and on October 3rd, the board accepted the appeal and scheduled the public hearing for today. In the denial, the hearings officer found that two criteria were not satisfied. One requires the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed use will not unreasonably interfere with other uses permitted in the zone in which it is located. The other requires that finding that the use will not force a significant change in or significantly increase the cost of accepted farmer forest practices. the cost of accepted farm and forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm and forest use. Hearings Officer found that the applicant...
Joe, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up?
The hearings officer found that the applicant did not provide information on the day-to-day operation of the business and did not analyze whether farm and forest practices in the area would be impacted, and concluded that the burden of proving those criteria was not met and denied the request. The applicant, through an attorney, has submitted additional information for the board to consider at this public hearing. You have the option of continuing the hearing, close the record, close the hearing, leave the record open, close the hearing and approve, modify, deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions?
Joe, I do have a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Up front, is seasonal farm work, working housing, a outright permitted use in this zone?
It is not. It would require an administrative review.
And a conditional use permit?
Well, instead of a conditional use, it would be administrative review. Yes, it would be on land use action.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question also. So in the, in the scope of this hearing, so there's already been a hearings officer's hearing. Are any of the issues that with regard to the application open for people to talk about, so it's not just limited to those two issues that you mentioned?
Correct.
So we, we don't need to limit people's testimony to just those issues? They can talk about any aspect of it, is that correct?
Any of the criteria, correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to double-check that because sometimes we remand things or whatever with a limited scope, and sometimes we don't.
Yes.
You haven't mentioned occupancy. Is that truly in the code, and how do we deal with that?
Occupancy as far as the...
Owner, owner, or someone?
Yes, the hearings officer included the definition in her report, and it does require the, let me see what it...
As a primary residence, is that truly the way it is?
So it'd be operated by the resident of the dwelling from which the property is located. Doesn't have to say the property owner has to be...
Okay.
But the resident, whoever's living in the house has to be the operator of the, of the home occupation.
And in this case, that is who?
That is, according to the applicant, that is the applicant, Mrs. Lee.
So even though it doesn't have to be the owner, in this case, the applicant is saying that she will be the person that's living in the home, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then can you also, before we get started, talk about the subordinate use issue that came up in the hearings officer's report? So what does the code say about the bed and breakfast? What does that mean when it says it's a subordinate use? Has to be a subordinate use?
It means that it's an accessory to living in the house. The primary use of the property is, is as the person's residence, and this is a use that, that is, I don't know how to say, other than subordinate to that, to have the living there.
Okay, so what does that look like? So if someone runs a bed and breakfast there 365 days a year, is it, does that make it, does it matter?
I think if you meet the limits of the, of the bed and breakfast, no more than five rooms, I don't think, I don't think that matters.
So the time doesn't matter, but it's the, the limitation on the number of rooms?
Correct.
And then, let me ask you another question. So there was something in the hearings officer's report and some of the testimony about limiting it to 1,500 square feet as a kind of a definition of subordinate use?
So in, in the, in the farm zones, there are specific criteria that the hearings officer cited. It does not include a size limit. The size limit comes into play if you're in a residential zone, like an acreage residential zone, you're limited to 1,500 square feet of floor area. There's no such limit in the resource zones.
So this, is this an acreage residential zone?
No, it's a special agriculture zone.
Special agriculture zone, okay. Okay. Anything else that you want to know before we get started? We have quite a few people that have signed up to testify, but we always take the applicant first and the applicant's attorney. So if you would come over here and introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Andrew Cole. I'm a lawyer, and I practice in Westlin, Oregon. And I represent Carol Lee, the applicant, in this conditional use proceeding.
Need to pull the microphone closer. We're having trouble with him this morning.
Thank you for entertaining this appeal. We believe it's particularly appropriate as we read the hearings officer's decision as believing that the application, which was otherwise complete and met the criteria for this conditional use, was incomplete in two respects, as pointed out by Mr. Fenimore. We have made a submission to you to try to address the concern that we had not adequately described the day-to-day operations of the bed and breakfast, so that you could compare the operation of the bed and breakfasts and determine whether there would be conflicts with farm and forest uses in this zone. So in our submission, we tried to address all of the pertinent criteria as they affect the operations day-to-day of the bed and breakfast. And if you have any additional questions or you, as to how we operate a bed and breakfast, we would be happy to try to answer those. The other area where the hearings officer felt the application was incomplete was that we failed to adequately analyze how the operation of the bed and breakfast could potentially increase the cost of or interfere with adjacent farm and forest practices. Our position initially and originally was, and still is, that there is no impacts of the operation of the bed and breakfast outside of the fenced and landscape boundaries of our property, other than potentially traffic, an increase in amount of traffic on Ballantyne Road. That's a valid and worthy criteria that deserves full consideration. We have not undertaken a traffic study for the reason that planning staff has determined that Ballantyne Road is adequate to, to absorb the vehicle trips that are associated with having guests on this residential property. And the hearings officers accepted that. It's a, it's a criteria that probably is the most, creates the most concern. I think in this application, the opponents have cited it as a major concern of theirs, and we appreciate that. If I lived there, I would be, I would want the board to address it as well. But it is uncontested so far that Ballantyne Road can absorb the additional traffic of this operation. Would point out that we anticipate that the greatest activity associated with the bed and breakfast would be on weekends in the summer. So this is not an operation that we think that's going to have day-in, day-out, 365-day-a-year full occupancy. So potentially, we hope it would, but realistically, we think that the summer months, people coming to the area for tourism, it's more likely that those will be the type of guests we will receive. Having met the traffic criteria, we've, the hearings officer has determined that, except for the two areas where she would prefer to hear more testimony or more evidence from the applicant, that we've met all the applicable criteria. And I would point out that your planning professional determined in advance of that appeal that we had met all the criteria. And I think, in fairness, it's important that we focus on the criteria because this application has generated a lot of interest based upon what my client's business activities are in the city of Portland and surrounding area.
I'm still having a hard time hearing you. It's getting softer.
I'm sorry. I'm asking you, Commissioners, to please focus on the criteria because opponents have raised the specter that we are going to convert this property for some nefarious purposes. And that's untrue. The attacks have become quite personal and scurrilous, and we would invite the Commissioners to simply ignore them. It's not relevant to the criteria. It's difficult for us to disprove a negative. And the county has ample and competent enforcement personnel. If they believe that we have failed to meet the conditions attached to this conditional use, we expect them to enforce the code completely.
So I'm looking in the hearings officer's report for the, and it was in your letter also, it's LOSA or something, the designation of what the road capacity is. Can you describe that a bit and talk about what that entails?
Well, I'm, I'm not an expert, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do know that in general terms, the county roads are evaluated based upon data collected by the city to rate a road for its capacity based upon the observed use of that road. And normally, it's within a range because obviously, depending on the number of residences, the location of any businesses or employers, those types of factors affect, excuse, affect how many vehicle trips per day are expected for that road. And I think it was determined, and I'll let Mr. Fenimore speak to this because he probably knows better than I do, but I, I expect that it was determined that Ballantyne Road is not currently operating at capacity and can absorb additional vehicle trips, and that the anticipated number of vehicle trips for a bed and breakfast with a resident, two employees, and potentially five guest rooms will not exceed the capacity of Ballantyne Road to accept that traffic.
And does a bed and breakfast allow people to stay for more than one night, or is it only just the night and the breakfast and the next morning?
I believe that bed and breakfast, you can have someone stay there more than one night, yes. If somebody wants to come in for a weekend function or something.
So they might be able to stay two nights?
Yes.
Could they stay longer than two nights?
Yes.
I mean, the day-to-day, so?
I'm not aware in Marion County of any limitation on the number of nights that someone can reside in a B&amp;B.
Because I think, I mean, that would affect the number of, if you, if people, you know, in my mind, I was trying to think of how many trips. So if five rooms and say, you have five different individuals, so the maximum would be five cars, right, or five, whatever, and five up and five back when people check out. But if they're staying multiple nights, they could be going back and forth for all kinds of reasons, so it could add to it, so.
They could. Conversely, they could come and enjoy the amenities that this property offers and make one vehicle trip in and one vehicle trip out over three days. Of course, they'd need to pack in groceries or go out to dinner, so.
Well, right, because if they were staying longer than that, then they would have to take their meals outside if you can only provide breakfast.
That's correct.
Right, so staying three days without leaving would be, I'd be really hungry.
They would.
Right.
That's probably a poor example. I don't expect them to, unless they're fasting, to go that option.
We don't want to cut there, okay. All right, so I'm going to put that down as another question for Joe. All right, any questions that you have? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Would you introduce yourself, please? Did you want to make some comments? No, you need to sit and speak into the microphone.
My name is Carol Lee. I am the owner of 3705 Ballantyne's Row, and I'm the applicant of, for the bed and breakfast for that location.
Okay. And so when did you purchase the home?
When? The escrow closed December, end of December 2017.
Okay. And you had a home in Lake Oswego, or do you still have a home in Lake Oswego?
Yes, I do have a home in Lake Oswego.
And are you living in the home in Lake Oswego?
Yes, I live both places, yes.
So you live, what would you consider your primary residence? Did you buy this home as a primary residence or as a second home?
Yes, I bought Ballantyne for my primary home, and I do have business in Portland. I will stay there sometimes right now. And I was, I will stay and I am staying in Ballantyne right now.
Okay, about how many days a week do you stay in Portland?
It depends, couple days a week, right now, yes.
And have you like moved furniture, or did it come furnished when you bought this?
It's, the place is furnished. I moved my personal stuff over there.
But the furnishings came with the home that were already in it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Since you've been, so when would, when was your move-in date? When did you move your personal things in?
I'm not, I don't have exact date. I'm constantly moving because personal things is not big stuff. I don't need a big truck. I can put it in my car. I just move my clothes, my personal belongings.
So when did you spend the first night in this home, I guess? What date? I mean, what month?
I think right after we closed, after we, I'm so excited, you know, so I stay there. So, and...
So January, February, around that time period?
I believe, I think every, every month, every week, I stay there.
Since when?
I assume it starts February, is it end of January or February?
Okay.
Because we'll close escrow at the end of last year, December 29th is the date that we close escrow. And actually, we went there on the June, New Year's, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. And...
So have you had a chance to meet any of your neighbors since you have moved in?
I did meet one of my neighbors when I was visiting over there. It's my, I think it's the end of the road.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. I met both of them, yes.
So ones that are directly adjacent to you, then? They actually, their, their property is adjacent to your property when you're calling them a neighbor?
Yes.
Okay. But none of the other people that are here that have been part of this?
No.
Period? Okay. And how is the, the five rooms that you're going to use, how are they configured? Are they in this one part of the house, or, because there's nine bedrooms in this house, right? And you're limited to five, so how are you going to determine in that day-to-day operations piece which places people stay in that home?
Every room have their character, so, and every room probably can be different. So, and we, we have seven rooms. We're only going to use five rooms for the bed and breakfast.
So you have seven bedrooms?
Seven bedroom and a two-guest house.
And two guest houses. When you're using five, are you using the guest houses or just five bedrooms in the main mansion itself?
Five guest room, I'm, I'm sorry, five bedroom for the bed and breakfast. I'm staying in the guest room.
I see, okay.
Yes.
So the five guests would kind of have opportunity, I think I read in your letter that you're asking for the opportunity for them to be able to use the other rooms in the home, is that correct? So the swimming pool, the exercise room?
Oh, yes. I do have exercise, they can, they can use exercise room. We have lounge room. They have piano over there. And they, we have backyard, we have, you know, they can, they, they can enjoy every room I can provide if they want to, because I believe they cannot just stay in the bedroom and leave bedroom and go out. They will stay in, entertain themselves. I will entertain themselves, them too. So, and I believe I will allow them to stay in the different room.
Okay. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. I, I do want to point out that we've looked at the code. We're trying to apply the code as it's written to our proposed operation, but there are some areas where the code isn't explicit, including whether an applicant can have a home in Portland or Lake Oswego and the Ballantyne Road house as her principal residence.
Right, I'm just trying to gather the facts right now, and then I'll ask some more questions afterwards.
But with respect to the number of rooms, we understand the commission can interpret its own rules and fill in the blanks where we don't, where the code isn't as explicit about these things. And we're prepared to accept the conditions that you want to impose on things like residency, on use of the property, and things like that, because... on things like residency, on use of the property, and things like that, because we have no guidance from the code itself.
Okay, appreciate that, I just, I'm just trying to get more of a flavor of what the day-to-day operations will be like, yes, Commissioner.
A couple of questions, thank you, Madam Chair. You have a document that shows a plan of how you're going to use what rooms, I assume you have to apply for some permits through our health department if this is approved, and show them a floor plan, et cetera, of how it's going to be used, because you're serving food, et cetera?
We haven't, we haven't, we're not aware that, we haven't presented with the document requesting a floor plan. If you want to leave the record open, we can, we're happy to supply that.
Okay, and then, Ms. Lee, do you drive a car?
Yes, I am.
Where is your driver's license registered?
Ballantyne Row, Ballantyne Row.
It is, and when did you convert that driver's license to Ballantyne Row?
Months ago, months ago. I, I don't know when, three, four months ago.
So I just had another, one more question, and that is, it says in the document that, let me read this, number thirteen, "The Bed and Breakfast Inn," this is your document, "will be advertised as a high-end bed and breakfast to guests or visiting family or vacation in Marion County." So do you have a sense about the price range you'd be looking at for, to, for the bed and breakfast and how you would advertise that? So go through Craigslist, or, you know, what are you, what are you looking to do in terms of marketing the bed and breakfast? And then what price range are you looking at for renting out the rooms?
We can do it through internet around the world, because the place is a very, very high-end place. And the room is really, you can see every room have their character. So our price, we are just thinking right now.
Yeah, just conceptually?
Yes, it's between three hundred to seven, eight hundred, depends on the room. That price may change, depends.
I just wanted to get a sense of what you were thinking, right?
Yes, depends on the room, because we have master bedroom over there, we have total, every room is different.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Anything you want to add? You get a chance to come back after everyone.
Thank you. I did want to point out and reiterate what we put in our submission, and that is that in terms of evaluating the criteria and impacts on adjacent properties, Ballantyne Road was a subject of one previous application, and that was to establish a farm, forest, excuse me, a forest dwelling across the street from Ms. Lee's property, and that was approved by the county. And we believe that's an appropriate analysis in terms of measuring impacts on adjacent farm and forest practices. And in that case, they actually removed property that was designated as a woodlot from forest practices in order to build a residence, and we're not removing any property, that doesn't, that criteria doesn't apply to our application. And in the, in the years since that approval was given, it's our observation from looking at the assessor's records that this area really is transitioning towards residential acreage development and away from farm and forest practices. I know you're aware of the area and how the city of Salem, the urban growth boundary is, is close by, and this is an area where if you examine the uses to which the properties are put, people who have farms and forest practices are not, not doing those things intensively, and I think it looks like the type of area where people are waiting for the zoning to change and the urban growth boundary to expand, where it will be put into more and not less residential development. And so the trends indicate to us that the impacts on farm and forest practices will diminish over time and not increase. But even if the properties that are zoned farm and forest nearby are put to their most intensive use, we still don't believe that our bed and breakfast would adversely increase the cost of or impact those uses, and we're not concerned about those practices impacting our use as a bed and breakfast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready to take, so is there anyone else that wants to testify in favor? Because we want to take everyone in favor first. Okay, everyone else has signed up in opposition, so I'll take you in the order that you signed up. So we have Robert and Janne Gunn, would you like to come together? And there's Lori Gunn signed up also, the same address? Different address? Sorry, I've got, oh, I see, it's off by one number, okay. All right, sorry, didn't read that carefully.
Related, however.
Okay, very good. So if you would state your name for the record, you don't need to state your address because we're on television and, but we have your address written on here, and then make your comments. We don't have time limits for hearings, unlike City of Salem where they limit you on time, but we would ask you to be succinct, and if you have comments that are repeating comments that someone else made, if, if you want to just kind of summarize those and make sure that anything new that you have to say after, because we have quite a few people here that have signed up, and we can just follow that process.
Thank you. My name is Robert Gunn. Our property is to the east of the subject property.
And I'm going to ask you to pull that microphone up closer, too.
There we go.
Have a hard time hearing.
Same kind of use in the court.
My name is Janne Gunn.
And we're about seven hundred feet or so to the east of that property. Let me address first, there was a question with regard to an acronym that was used, LOS something. I think that means line of sight.
Okay.
It has to do with the interesting character of Ballantyne Road. It's not your average county road. There was a big chuckle at the hearing when one of the young folks from the county said that he drove it on Google and thought it was fairly flat. Ballantyne Road is anything but flat. As a matter of fact, there's a hill that has so little line of sight that cement trucks lose their load out of the top as they go up the hill. As a matter of fact, the first time they lost it was when they built this particular house. We've been living there for over thirty years. The second time that I've seen it happen was about three weeks ago, when somebody was building a foundation up there, they lost it right out the top again. That, that's a very steep road, that's the emphasis I'm getting to, and that was a very good question, because Ballantyne Road is anything but average, and it does have almost no shoulder, and as a matter of fact, we encourage people not to walk or run on it, but everybody up there does it. So that's what that was addressing. I would just like to, I'll try to focus here. One of the, one of the concerns that we and I think the entire neighborhood has is not necessarily the concept of having a bed and breakfast in the neighborhood. That's not the point. Counsel refers to, well, let's just stick with the criteria. One of the criteria has to do with how this property will actually be used. Others can perhaps address the actual residency and other things that we, we, by, and I mean, there are a few people here today in opposition, there are lots more out there that haven't, haven't been able to come because of the time of the hearing. The, the nature of how the property is used seems to be expanding as we speak. I noticed that the hearings officer, when she made her findings, indicated that, talking about the amenities that counsel was referring to, and if you don't know that this is the Morrell Mansion, I'd be real surprised. They, she says that "A building is a single-family dwelling and the proposed use must be established and continually run in accordance with the bed and breakfast in definition, with only sleeping room and morning meal allowed, period. Additional meals shall not be served. Only five sleeping rooms are allowed, and they must be bedrooms only, not rooms with kitchen. The home occupation," and I emphasize that again, "a home occupation must be subordinate to the residential use of the dwelling," and then goes on. She, in saying that, is quoting Marion County ordinance seventeen dot one-ten dot one-ninety-five. In other words, she's merely stating what the law is. In the next paragraph of her findings and decision, it mentions, as counsel did, that there, because there are so many, this is a large dwelling with many amenities such as exercise room, swimming pool, dance hall, and so on, these amenities must be off-limits to bed and breakfast guests. In doing that, she's referring to the ordinance. "A bed and breakfast is a sleeping room and a morning meal. This does not mean guests cannot walk the grounds nor have morning meals outside, but the grounds cannot be used to host events. The use cannot be advertised as anything more than a room to sleep in and a morning meal to eat." In doing, in stating what she did, the hearings officer was doing nothing more, as I said, than referring to the ordinance that governs the use. It is that use that the neighbors are objecting to, because it is clear, not only from the fact that Ms. Lee operates businesses in another place, and not only the character of those businesses, but also what has been said here in this hearing. Counsel mentioned that we want to make sure that these amenities are available to everyone. I believe, and if you want to refer to the counsel's points and authorities, number three, "The Bed and Breakfast Inn will be operated in the existing dwelling on the property. That dwelling is located on nine acres and so on. Guests will have the use and access to the home's indoor pool, bowling alley, workout room, as well as library and the hallways which connect them." I've been in a few Marius that don't have those kinds of amenities. Our position here is that this is not truly an application for a home occupation, where a resident is going to serve guests breakfast and a bed to sleep in. This is a hotel. It is nothing more than, less than a boutique hotel with only five rooms. When we're talking high-end, yes indeed, it would be high-end, but that's not what a bed and breakfast should be, and that is not the kind of thing that should be in the zone that this property is located in. The objection that most of the residents will express has to do with how this business will be run and what kind of clientele might be expected. I know that's speculative. Ms. Lee couldn't even tell us frankly how much she's going to charge. Now what kind of businessperson doesn't take into account how much you're going to charge for a room when you buy a property that's in the nature of two-plus million dollars? This was purchased solely for the purpose of running a business as a primary function of that place. It is not secondary to the residence. As a matter of fact, we can tell you when Ms. Lee changed her driver's license, as we checked.
She changed her residency, or at least her physical address, on May thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. She changed it to the Ballantyne Road address. Prior to that address, her address was in Woodland Terrace in, in Lake Oswego, Oregon. The address to which her driver's license indicates all correspondence and mail should be sent to. Ms. Lee's purpose in purchasing this property was for a commercial enterprise. Ms. Lee, since the early two thousands, has been in the hospitality business. Now, her partner, who was at the last hearing, did not appear today. However, Ms. Lee's affairs, whether they have been personal or employment-related or business-related, have been connected to Mr. Johnny Zouklay since the early two thousands. This, these people operate hospitality businesses. So what we believe is that what is intended here is to put in a high-end boutique hotel. Now, if I may, I would like to address a little bit about the character of the neighborhood and why we are concerned. Granted, this particular piece of property is zoned SA, special agricultural, and yes indeed, certain, certain applications are allowed in a special, in a special agricultural zone. However, this is a dead-end road. This road starts at Kubler, it goes around in a dog leg, and ends at the end of Ballantyne Road, which is almost the end of Ms. Lee's property, with a few other properties that connect there. Those properties are special agricultural, as are the properties on the south side of Ballantyne Road, which go over the hill and connect with Vita Springs. Now, if you were saying, okay, we're going to put a bed and breakfast on Vita Springs in a special agricultural zone, you would have a, a road that runs all the way down to the river, but that's not the way Ballantyne Road is. Ballantyne Road runs about a mile and a half. It is a dead-end road. At the east edge of Ms. Lee's property, the zoning becomes residential agricultural. So it is two, two and a half acre minimums. In some areas, and as you get further down the road, it's acre minimums. So what you have is effectively a residential area where people have moved their families, where they have built large homes, where this is an entirely different zoning configuration. This is, this, this is not appropriate for the zoning neighbors, for us who have our two and a half acre homes, for people with children, whose children catch the bus out on Ballantyne Road, people who walk the road, who bike the road. This is not a commercial zone, it's nothing like a commercial zone. But that's what Ms. Lee is proposing to bring into our neighborhood, is a boutique hotel, and that's why we're here. It's not so much the concern about the impact on the forest lands, it's the fact that this is not a bed and breakfast. This is not a subordinate use of a piece of property. It is a boutique hotel, an expansion of a commercial enterprise from Portland, Oregon. And in fact, if one were to look at the trustee, a copy of which I do have, there are two parcels listed on Ms. Lee's trustee. The one parcel we suspect is the nine-point-four acres, which is zoned SA. And even though the county argues that the other parcel still belongs to Barbara, excuse me, Barbara Morrell, and is, and is not included, that little piece that did belong to Barbara Morrell, which appears to be on the trustee of Ms. Lee's property, is zoned RA. So you can see, this property is not like your typical SA zone, not at all.
So to sum up, what we've got here is a boutique hotel. It's objectionable on those grounds alone, regardless of what the, the nature or character of other enterprises are, it's this enterprise that we're working on, and that's the decision. We ask that you simply sustain the hearings officer's decision. That decision followed the law, and it's clear, absolutely crystal clear, that Ms. Lee intends to expand the use of this property beyond any concept of a bed and breakfast home occupation. She really doesn't live there. Last hearing, there was an open mailbox, now it's locked, so nobody can look in there and find out that there's no mail going there. We'll leave that, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Questions for us?
I see it shaking, so you're, you're, you're fine. Yeah, thank you. Karen McKay.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. I really appreciate you hearing all the neighbors. Many of us could not come because we actually work. My husband is one of them, and three of my neighbors have also mentioned they would like to be here, but they had pre-existing. like to be here, but they had pre-existing appointments, and they couldn't arrive. I live to the immediate east of the property. My property comes aside it. I have written a letter. I'm not sure if it was submitted, but I would like to submit it. I'll read parts of it. Our home is adjacent to Ms. Lee's house, and we have a direct view of the east side of the property. I am confident that my neighbors will address their concerns about Ms. Lee's associations with Johnny Diablo Zouklay, their history of working together on different business ventures, which includes strip clubs with contact dancing, and where they proudly boast that they put the meat on the pole and not on the plate, their concerns that the bed and breakfast will be serving more than a bed and a breakfast, and the traffic on our steep, rural, dead-end road, land use, and the impact on our water source. I would like to address Ms. Lee's residency or lack of. One thing I'd like to mention is when you asked about her driver's license, I quickly pulled my driver's license out. I'm quite confident on every single person's driver's license in this room. It will tell you the issue date. My last issue date is oh-eight, oh-eight seventeen. She could have pulled out hers, but instead, she gave a, I don't know, answer. Clearly, she knows and is trying, in my belief, to not quite tell the full truth. But back to her residency. Ms. Lee testified under oath that she lives on the property. On January nineteenth of two thousand eighteen, a puppy, a little black lab, joined our family. On that day, I began walking up and down our driveway and to the top of the road, past the Lee house, four to ten times a day. Actually, there are times where I am up there twenty times. I walk between seven-thirty a.m. and midnight. During this time, I have only seen the weekly landscapers who are currently at the house. They typically arrive at eight forty-three a.m. every Wednesday morning. I am that nosy. Once, there were several vehicles that belonged to an electric company. The only voices or car doors that I have heard have come from the landscapers or the electricians. Other than the exterior lighting, I have never seen any interior lights on that house until last night. Granted, I was out of town five days. I did stay in a lovely bed and breakfast where I paid three hundred a night. Not quite as nice as your house, but it was a lovely house. So I think you probably should charge more. I think you're underestimating. Again, no voices, no exterior lights. The motion detector lights above the garage that would go on when the previous owners or the Moros drove up have not come on. I have actively watched for any signs of life at the Lee house. I have found none. I have intentionally checked the driveway for signs of vehicles entering and leaving the property. Other than the weekly landscapers, and again, those electricians, there have been no signs of tire tracks on rainy days, and no signs of tire tracks when there are leaves or pine needles on the ground. I am also always looking to see if the interior lights are on. There have not been any. My home office faces the Lee house. I work from home. There have been no signs of regular, or frankly, any signs of life in this house, other than the weekly landscapers. I have a waving relationship with them because they actually work at another neighbor's. So I do know, we talk. On weekends, my husband and I, we work in our west pasture. We're chopping wood. I have never seen any activity on a weekend there. We had a project that took two months, and we had a contractor at our house. He even remarked, does anybody live in that house? That was May and April. No, no signs of life. In other words, from my western and also the street view, I have not seen any activity that would suggest that anyone lives in the Lee house. The house was originally designed to entertain guests. That is the reason why the Moros created this home, was to entertain their international guests. This house is designed to entertain. It is not a home residency. However, when the Moros were in town, it was extremely obvious. The lights came on. The garage door opened, cars entered. You could hear the gate. It goes clunk-clunk when it shuts. The Moros drove up and down the road. I, this is the first time I have ever laid eyes on Ms. Lee. I have nev-, I have no clue what kind of car she drives. She says she lives there. No car has entered into that area. You can hear voices, you can hear conversations, and other than the landscapers, there are none. Ms. Lee, under oath, again, today, says she lives in the house. The denial letter says, Ms. Lee's residency will be required as a condition of approval, and failure to reside on the property would allow recavation of, whatever that word is, of any approval. Since January nineteen, nineteen eighteen, I have actively and intentionally watched for any signs of Ms. Lee living on that property. I have seen no signs to digest, suggest Ms. Lee resides at thirty-seven oh-five Ballentine Road, South Salem, Oregon, nine-seven three oh-two. By not residing on the property, Ms. Lee has failed to meet the required condition of approval. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So I do want to correct one thing, in that we don't take an oath here, so she said it under oath at the hearings officers. Right, but, but not here today.
And then the other thing that I wanted to say after the Gunn's presentation is that we do have, I mean, I made photocopies, took these home, read each one of them, the evidence that was presented at the hearings officer's hearing, and that file is available. The commissioners have read those as well. So just wanted to make sure, there's been some mention of people that wanted to be here and could not be here, and those that have submitted written testimony in the past, that continues to be part of the record, just so that you feel assured about that. All right, so we have Tanya Cotrell. Am I saying that correctly? And James, did you want to come up also? State your name.
Okay. My name is Tanya Cotrell. My husband and I and our four children live at five-two-five-five Shady Oaks Lane, which is a very small road that is more of a, an extended driveway with two homes on it that comes right off of Ballentine, just one property before the, the property that we are discussing, Ms. Lee's property. We are approximately four, five hundred yards from the property. I just would like to state, first of all, that I am in agreement with all that was stated with the first three neighbors that testified. I won't reiterate all of that. We just moved to Oregon from Montana, summer of two thousand and seventeen, so we're new residents here. I would just like to state that I remember very distinctly the first night that we spent in our new home after we closed. That was July twenty-first nineteen, or excuse me, two thousand and seventeen. And I find it a little bit difficult to believe, when purchasing such a distinctive property, that it would be hard to recall when residency began. So just a personal observation there. I would like to just emphasize that we also have not seen any evidence, not one single evidence, of occupancy or even of visitation. We have never once seen anyone on the property, never seen lights in the home. We cannot see the property through our window, it's slightly blocked visually, but I walk the road up at the end of Ballentine frequently. We both work from home as well, and so at various times, morning, afternoon, evening, I like to stroll right by the front of the Ballentine property, and have never seen the gate open, never seen lights on, never seen anyone there. Do not believe that there is anyone residing at the home. I would just add that our four children, we have two teenage daughters, an eighteen, excuse me, seventeen-year-old, a sixteen-year-old. We also have an eleven-year-old daughter and a nine-year-old son, or sixteen-year-old daughter. She is a lovely girl. She is a high-functioning autistic teenage girl who loves animals. She has a wonderful job at one of the agricultural businesses that is very nearby. It actually is adjacent to our home, and probably just, I think, one property over from Ms. Lee's property. This is a large miniature horse stable and horse breeder, and the owners of that business show their horses. My daughter works as their staple hand. She works every day, every evening. She walks through wooded path between properties that's very near this property to go and work with the horses. She walks alone. She also rides. They have larger horses as well. She likes to ride recreationally the horses down Ballentine Road up at the end of the property. We have felt comfortable with that because it is such a quiet road at the, at the time being. It's a quiet road without a lot of traffic. It's a dead-end road. It's a road that people, elderly people walk on, children walk on, people walk their animals, and people do, other than even my daughter, ride horses up there as well. The traffic impact would definitely have an impact on the quality usage of that road by residents, neighbors, children, and teenagers. And so I know that there are issues here that maybe are subjective. You know, it was mentioned at the beginning that this should not be a personal, that the personal issues, that there should not be a personal attack against Ms. Lee. I just would like to mention that when, you know, we moved, we chose this property because of its quiet, safe, neighborly, family-oriented nature, and we have children, we are parents, and when we have children and teenagers that have free access to roam around the neighboring properties, it does become very personal to us. And I think that it is very relative to look at the history of business and marketing and enterprises that Ms. Lee is involved in currently, and what kind of business market pool that she is connected to as well. I will just add one more thing. My husband and I do have a little bit of a hospitality business as we own a vacation rental property in Florida, and even though that is a much, much smaller venture, there is no way that we would have purchased that property without having full analysis of exactly what we are charging per night for our, our guests to stay there. We also have a very extensive business plan as we went into that business a few years back on how we would market it. We knew exactly how it would be listed on VRVO, on HomeAway, on Airbnb. We have a website that's professionally developed as well. We have hospitality booking manager, as well as property manager. All of those details were laid out well in advance before we began that business. And so it's very difficult for me to find that the answers are convincing when there's nothing really provided, other than a vague statement of, we're going to market it on the internet, and the price range will be somewhere in a range, you know, several hundred dollars without anything to find. I believe that is because there are, as stated previously, intentions to expand on what is being presented here, and that those intentions are concerning to those of us who have families nearby.
Yes, I did it.
Just state your name first.
Yep, I was getting there. My name is James Cotrell, and I, I just want to reiterate in, in agreement to what the concern neighbors are suggesting or saying. For me, I, I just want to underline a specific point, you know, having, having four children, and I'm just, I just have safety really running through my head. And that's a big deal. That's a big deal to me. You can think about traffic, you can think about whatever other possibilities might, might come that way, and I'm thinking that too. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions for us.
Questions? No questions? Thank you. Lori Gunn.
Hi, my name is Lori Gunn, and I live just east of the property here. I did have a letter, apparently, that was sent for, from the application process before, and apparently was not put on the mailing list for response back, and perhaps that was, I did not add my address in on my email. I don't know, I don't recall. One of my, some of my concerns, I too have, have raised children on this road, and the safety issue is definitely there. But going to how this application came about and to the intentions of what is going on here raises great question and concern in our minds. And it appeared that the house closed on December twenty-ninth of two thousand seventeen. Application for the bed and breakfast was begun within about a week, I believe it was January sixth of two thousand eighteen. And granted, that was not completed until April, when all of this process and the neighbors learned of this venture. However, that goes to the idea that the home was purchased for the express purpose of having a business venture. Now, the business venture of a bed and breakfast at this property would not bring in the kind of revenue that would help support the price of the home or anything else like that. So the question goes to, you know, what, what is really going on here? There is concern, and it casts shade on what the true purpose of this venture is. We have also, we don't walk as regularly on the road, but when we do, we like to walk up to the end of the road and have not noticed any action there as far as a residence would be concerned, other than the caretaking of the property by the landscapers. We express concern that this is not a venture, this, this is a business venture, it's not a, a primary residence, and that on its face, that would be a reason to continue the denial of this application, and we ask you to deny. Anything else? Any questions? I was just checking the date on the application to see if it matched what you said. Thank you. All right, so I don't have any questions. Thank you very much. Rhonda Griffinson? I might have said that incorrectly. Apologize. So introduce yourself and tell me how you really pronounce your last name.
Pardon?
Introduce yourself so I can hear how you pronounce your last name.
Hi, hi, my name is Rhonda Griffinson, and I live just to the east of Ms. Lee's property. There is a driveway, a, a narrow driveway that's right between our property, but I basically am right next door. My concern is that she is not occupying the property. I walk frequently, my husband walks frequently, and we have seen no activity. The only activity we've seen are the landscapers. I believe they may have had some security people go in there, but that's the only activity. I've never seen this woman in my life. This is the first time I've ever seen her. I did write a letter, and I don't know if the county got it, but there's just a little portion that I was a little concerned about. Because I'm, because I became familiar with Ms. Lee's business history and relationship with Mr. Zouklay, I have little doubt that her intentions are not as stated, and instead she purchased this property to run a business out of it. Out of curiosity, and because I work in real estate, some time ago, I pulled the loan documents which Ms. Lee signed, also under penalty of perjury, to purchase the property, the Ballentine property. Not surprisingly, these documents reflect that Ms. Lee swore she was purchasing this property as an owner-occupied residence so that she could qualify for a lower interest rate. In so doing, Ms. Lee promised the federal government that she would occupy the residence within sixty days of signing the trustee. She signed the trustee, closed escrow on December twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Although there are few minor exceptions to the requirement, which do not matter since Ms. Lee- which do not matter since Ms. Lee swore to you that she resided in the property, these loan requirements meant she had to reside in her new home full-time by February, the end of February 2017. Period. I mean, otherwise, she would not be able to get a owner-occupied loan. It would have to be a non-owner-occupied loan. She'd have to pay a higher interest rate. And I believe that she's been dishonest.
2018 is what you meant, not 2017, right?
Pardon?
So if she closed in December of 2017, it would be by the end of February 2018, correct?
Yes. I'm sorry if I misstated. In deciding this appeal, I would like you to consider this. If Ms. Lee is willing to break occupancy promises which, if demonstrated, would constitute federal mortgage fraud, how is it reasonable to expect she has any intention of actually complying with your residency conditions? The short and obvious answer is that she has no intentions of doing so and never did. I have to believe a condition of granting an application like this requires you to assess the applicant's honesty and integrity, and the making false representations alone would be grounds to deny the application. On behalf of all of our neighbors, we are not enthused about the prospect of spending years of our lives filing complaints and attempting after the fact to force Ms. Lee, Mr. Zouklay, and any number of other individuals to comply with the conditions they never intended to follow. Their history in this regard speaks for itself. Her application should be denied immediately on this basis alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right, Jess, and I'm having a hard time reading your writing. Is it Barron, Barham? Jeb, okay. All right. Looked like an S. Sorry. I taught junior high, but even this one was hard for me.
That's how she keeps us in line, too.
I tried.
My name is Jeb Barham.
Thank you.
Since I can't spell very well. I'll be quick. I have five kids. I live approximately 900 yards from this property. If, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we could think about here, but if for no other reason, just simply the, this road, if you just, if you drove up this road. I run on this road. I walk on this road. It's dangerous. There is no shoulder. Like I said, I have five kids. My first one gets their permit in 21 days. Not that I'm counting, but I'm scared for them to drive up and down this road because it's just a dangerous road. And so the idea of putting a place in here with a bunch more people coming in and out is scary in and of itself. As far as the occupancy issues and Mrs. Lee, I have never seen her until today either. Like I said, I run and/or walk on this road every single day, and I've never seen anybody at that place. I have seen landscapers there, though. So for whatever it's worth, I hope that we continue the denial process on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right, William and Joan Gavin.
We're the Gavins, William and Joan Gavin. We live at 5255 Misty Pine Lane South, which is the driveway that takes off right at the end of Ballantyne Road. And we are the immediate neighbors to the west of Ms. Lee's property. We share a common chain link cyclone fence six foot high that's 660 feet long. Our home, we actually can see the Lee home from our master bath window, which is open during the daytime and only closed at night. As to her testimony that she is a resident at the home, we can categorically say that that is a false statement. She, we met her and her stated best friend and business partner, Johnny Diabloz Zouklay, in March, which was the first time we saw her. We actively walk our driveway, which again parallels her property, and then down in front of their property on a daily basis, every morning. And then, since we have a German Shepherd dog that I walk like that, I walk during the day several times along that same thing. So basically, I go around 50% of her property every day, multiple times. As I say, we first met her in March. That's the only other time, other than the appeals hearing that we asked for in June, that we've seen Ms. Lee. Now, we did note that for the first time in 10 months since she's owned the property, that we did see lights on in the house and the garage door open, and that someone stayed at the house last night. That's the first time we have noted any residential activity at the mansion since she acquired the property in December. And that's supported by the testimony that you've heard from the other neighbors that are in close proximity. I just was able to see the lawyer's response and appeal just as we sat in back there. In one quick reading, there is one statement there that is untrue for certain, and that is that the forest land that only three of the six surrounding forest properties oppose this conditional use of the Lee property, that is untrue. I think they're not considering the fact that the Warners and Gavins actually own, as not only our neighbors, but actually co-own the 21-acre forest parcel due west of the property. I know for a fact that we opposed this, that the other, Hazel Peterson, who owns 31 acres just at the end of Ballantyne Road, she opposed. She actually joined with Joan and I in appealing the original approval of this conditional use. And the Stanleys, who live just to the south and have all of the forest land all the way down Ballantyne Road on the south, they actively have opposed this. The other forest property is the Matsons property to the north, which has 40 acres, and they also have the miniature horse operation. They have actively opposed it. And to my knowledge, the only other forest parcel there belongs to the Guns, and they have actively, and they're here today, all the Gun family, have actively opposed this. So there is no surrounding special agricultural zoned land that does not oppose this application.
Thank you. Can I ask a question on that? So in terms of the opposition, is the opposition with regard to concerns about conflicts with the surrounding land, because that is really what the criteria focuses on? And can you talk a little bit about what you do with the 21 acres that you have in farm, I mean in forest land?
Yes, I can certainly address that. As a forest property, we're obligated to operate our land in forest production, and which means that occasionally there'll be logging that goes on. And we logged in 2012 on our property. Hazel Peterson, who owns the 31 acres adjacent to us and just at the end, dead end of it, or the west end of Ballantyne adjacent to our property, she logged her property two and a half years ago, 20 acres of it. And during that time, there's logging trucks coming, there's heavy equipment running, seven days a week, there's chainsaws going, chippers running, things like that. Now, on our particular property, even though we're not in an active logging operation, we continuously need to thin the trees. And so we go in and last year this time, we cut down probably 200 trees and cut them up into firewood, chipped up all of the slash, like that. So during those times, we're running chippers, we've got people coming and going, we're running chainsaws.
So I can appreciate that, but I guess if the applicant has said that they don't, that that isn't going to bother them. Are there converse issues of having a bed and breakfast that would interfere with or impact your ability to do the logging and thinning and whatever you need to do on your property?
Probably not, as long as their guests did not complain.
Sorry to interrupt. I just needed to understand that better.
That's fine. Please feel free to interrupt me at any point in time, and I'll be happy to answer questions. I think it's been stated clearly that our main objection here is that we feel that Ms. Lee really intends to run a business here by all of her actions to date and her past business experience. And we just don't want that type of an operation in our community. We object, I think, because of traffic considerations to a bed and breakfast at this location in any case, but we specifically do not want the type of an operation we think this will transition into. And I say that with some degree of authority. We were, prior to moving to our home here in Oregon, we were hoteliers, and we, in 2008, acquired a large 150,000 square foot hotel, historic hotel in Ogden, Utah, tallest building in Ogden. At the time of acquiring that hotel, it had been sort of run into the ground, and we required it through foreclosure. And upon doing that, I ended up taking up a residency in the hotel along with my MBA daughter, who has an MBA from Marriott School of Business in Provo, Utah. And she took over working with me as the manager of the hotel. And I state this for the fact that when we took this hotel over, it had a nightclub with pole dancing and some of the same types of activities that Ms. Lee and her partner Johnny Zouklay are involved in. We had prostitutes living in the hotel. We had all kinds of other issues. And I had to deal with those issues. It took me eight years to turn that hotel around to where we could find a buyer to sell it. Today, it operates as a first-class hotel in a, it took considerable effort on the part of not only ourselves, but us working with the community, working with the other businesses, working with the city leadership to resolve the issues that had been created at that place. Much easier to avoid having that sort of situation from the get-go than to try and turn it around after the fact. I looked, along with my daughter, at purchasing the Morrow Mansion when it became available for sale. At that time, my daughter and I did an analysis of whether it would be a profitable venture. She would like to have lived in the hotel, in the home, just as Ms. Lee is stating she wants to do. So we looked at it as if it was a primary residence for her, could she operate the hotel, the property as a bed and breakfast successfully? And it was overwhelming that the cost of such a large dwelling and a large property with its landscape maintenance and such would make it uneconomic, completely uneconomic. And so we said, well, what would it take to do it? And we said if we could have, make it an event center, and also, other than five bed and breakfast rooms, we could have the two rooms that have kitchens with them. If we could rent those out as apartments, and then have wedding, high-end weddings, and conferences and things like that at the house, we got to where we could just maybe break even by doing that. And I was figuring much higher rents on a daily basis than what Ms. Lee has talked about. Now, in some of my written testimony that you should have with you, I've given you the brief analysis of the bed and breakfast operation. But I wanted to let you know that I've gone much deeper into this. And as a previous hotelier, I think I have the expertise to do an analysis of this. It's quite clear that because she's not a residence at the house, has never been, she may have spent one or two nights there. But as far as I know, while she says her driver's license now says that it's switched over to that address, she still receives her personal mail at her Las Vegas address. She's not there enough to even get her personal mail. She clearly has some other plans for this than that. We could say that that's speculation on our part, but I think it's speculation that's well-founded upon the facts and the demonstrations of what she's done to date. And the fact that she's, she basically has made false statements to the hearings officer. She's, in her application, is basically based upon false pretense. And we would respectfully request that the commissioners continue to deny approval of this conditional use.
Thank you. Want to say anything, Joan?
I concur with everything that's been said. I, as a grandmother, I look at that road, and I'm very concerned. And I'm concerned about the children on that road. There's a family of five, soon to be six children, at a very dangerous driveway. I'm very concerned about that family. There's another family of four children on that road where I see people speeding. There are many families that I'm scared for. So I'm concerned not only for what's been stated, but I'm concerned for what is going to happen to the kids on that road.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have one, two more comments.
Okay, we have a number of other people that still need to come up.
Yes, and I'll make it quick. One of the statements that Ms. Lee's attorney made was that the area is transitioning from forest to residential. Basically, the zoning codes do not support that. Those lands that are forest lands now cannot be changed. And for example, Hazel Peterson's property of 31 acres cannot be subdivided.
Right, you laid all of that out already, so I appreciate that.
Right, okay. And the other point I'd like to leave you with is that we've had community meetings and talked to almost all of the neighbors, not just around this property, but up and down, all the way up and down the one-mile stretch of Ballantyne Road. And I think I can safely say that the neighbors are completely unified in opposition to the bed and breakfast.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Shelley and Andrew Warner.
Hi, I'm Shelley Warner. I live to the west of Ms. Lee's property on 5235 Misty Pine Lane. I live to the west of Ms. Lee's property on five-two-three-five Misty Pine, and I'm a half-owner of the forest land which is adjacent. This is my son, Andrew, who didn't realize he was signing up to be with me.
That's right, you?
Um, I want to reiterate that, um, as that half-owner of that forest land, that is in opposition to this, and I oppose it, as well as all of the neighbors that I've talked to, um, are in opposition to this. Um, the Marion County Code states that the director of, or the hearings office may deny any land use application if it is determined the application includes any false or misleading information. At the hearing, Carol Lee testified under oath that she lives on the subject property. It is quite clear, as you've heard from the neighbors, that she does not, in fact, live in the house. There are no tire tracks going in and out, there are frequently pine needles on the driveway, so you can see who's driven in and out of the drives. Hers have no tire tracks. No one has been seen at the house except for the grounds crew. Neighbors who are within hearing distance, myself included, have heard nothing. I've heard no gates, no garage door opening, no voices. I can hear people talking next door when they're doing yard work, I can hear their conversations, nothing is coming from there. Um, there has been no activity at all, which would make me think that she lives there. So then, her statement that she lives on the subject property is a false and misleading statement intentionally made to try and get this approval when she has no intent to use this property in the way she is saying. Um, the hearings officer noted that, quote, "Ms. Lee's residency will be required as condition of approval." However, it is unlikely this is her intent. It is more likely she could, would like to continue to live in Lake Oswego, where she receives her mail, than to live in the Ballentine House and that she would like to use this house instead as a commercial property. Additionally, with the nine bedrooms, exercise room, swimming pool, dance hall, et cetera, um, the house way exceeds the standard of five bedrooms, which, um, is the definition of a bed and breakfast. Instead, it should be deemed a hotel, which has been mentioned. Um, my concern is there is no way to monitor Ms. Lee's use of space. She already has said she intends to allow use of the exercise rooms, the dance hall, um, the pool, she intends to allow that use, even though the hearings officer specifically said that would not be under the definition of a bed and breakfast. Um, there is no way to monitor how many guests she has each weekend. And the idea that the guests would come up one time and then leave is ludicrous, because how can they only eat one meal if they never leave? So, they would be driving up and down Ballentine for lunch and dinner multiple trips, not just one trip. Um, because there's no way to monitor her use, there would be no way for the county to find out or to know without extreme observation and documenting and hours put in by neighbors that she was not using it as a bed and breakfast, but was instead using it as a sex hotel. Um, I lived across the street for several years from a home where they chose to sell crack out of their garage. The police knew they were selling crack, the residents had felonies in their names. They busted them over and over, but yet, it took years to finally get that to stop the selling of crack out of the garage, which was known to be happening. I have five children, I do not want to spend my time trying to prove that Mrs. Lee is not meeting these standards, when I can tell at the very beginning, her intent is not to meet these standards of a bed and breakfast. Um, for these reasons, I ask that you please continue to deny her application.
Thank you. Andrew, anything you want to add? You want to introduce yourself?
Uh, I'm Andrew Warner and this is my mom.
Very good, thank you for coming. Okay, so Heather Johnson is next. Okay, thank you. Laura Leneris? Leneris, thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Leneris, and I too concur with everything that has been said previously, and so I can be very short. I will tell you that, um, we moved into the neighborhood, into our home, um, December two thousand seventeen. We have always dreamed of owning acreage and we feel very, very lucky to be there, we loved the neighborhood, we loved the feel of the neighborhood, the families we've met, um, we just love it. And for this to be happening is so disappointing. Um, I will tell you, we live to the west of the property and, um, most of the people that has spoken here today live very close to the property. We're, um, down, quite a ways down the street, we're actually at the bottom of the big hill. And, um, I have three children, they all drive, pulling out of our driveway is very tricky sometimes because we're at the bottom of the hill and it's, um, limited sight. And, um, most of our neighbors that live up on the hill are very respectful driving down the hill. You kind of know, um, when it's not a neighbor that's driving down the hill, because they come very fast down that hill, very fast. Many times, um, I have had plenty of room to pull out and before I know it, someone's on my tail. And it's, it's a scary turn and, um, I guess that's all I really have to say. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ralph Shooter? Is that correct? Schooler?
Schooler.
Thank you. Looked like a T.
Rock school with an E R at the end of it.
Alright, got it. I will fix that.
Uh, this is a surprise, I, I didn't know I was gonna be asked to say anything, but, uh, Ballentine Road's a dangerous road. I'm in my seventies and I, I walk that road, there's no shoulders. Uh, when I was working, uh, the road's not maintained in the winter at all. Uh, the county does not plow that road. I, when Mr. Morrow lived there, he had some influence and could occasionally get the road sanded or plowed. Uh, when I was still working, I had to get to work early in the morning and some, the hill is unbelievably steep and, uh, I, I slid, I slid off the road and, uh, it didn't do too much damage to my car, but two neighbors that had, uh, four-wheel-drive vehicles came driving along, they, they, they had never been in an accident and they hit the icy spot, uh, they slid off the road with four-wheel drive and, uh, one of them hit one side of my car, which was off the road, my car was off the road by then, and then another neighbor came along, he hit the other side of my car, totaled my car then, and, uh, it, it, and I noticed this summer, it's, it's a lovely lane when you drive up to our house, houses, but it's overgrown. Some of the bushes and shrubs and blackberry bushes are growing across the road practically and, uh, it's, it's just not suitable for traffic. Uh, as far as bed and breakfast, I, I would support people that have a bed and breakfast if it's, if it's run as a bed and breakfast. But I, and the Morrow Mansion is a lovely property, but to, I just don't see it being run as a bed and breakfast. It's, it's a huge property and, uh, I think it would be more run as a, a boutique motel as a business. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the last person signed up, unless there's someone that didn't sign up that wants to speak, is Roy Escavell.
Uh, good morning, my name is Roy Escavell, I live at, uh, two-seven-eight-four Ballentine Road. I am actually the first residence on the left side of the road as you're traveling, uh, up the road towards. I cannot speak to whether or not Ms. Lee has been in residence, 'cause I obviously am not an avid walker or runner, uh, and I, uh, don't have much option to go or, or much opportunity to go up the hill, except for perhaps activities, uh, that my children have with the neighbors. And, and very rarely have I seen the Morrow Mansion, uh, except for a couple of opportunities, again, at, at neighbors' homes. Um, so what I'd like to speak on today is, is the safety of the road. I feel that the location of the house leaves me in a unique position to speak, um, even more detailedly than almost all of my neighbors for such thing, as I live on the south side of the road, which means I'm on the downhill side, um, and I also live incredibly close to, uh, an arc of part of the road that has a hill. Um, I remember when I first moved in, about three years ago, having a U-Haul, I would have to go all the way up the road and make a turnaround at the end, um, to be able to, to get the U-Haul into my driveway correctly. And the road is so steep that with that U-Haul, I had to just ride the brakes incredibly hard when the, when the day was sunny and the weather was good. I do remember a winter we had where the winter was so bad that my, my wife had to skip work for three days while me and a cousin of mine chipped away just so we could get out of the little dip of our driveway, uh, to get off there. So, and also, as close as we are to that hill, it, every time I leave my driveway, it is a blind leave. If someone's coming down the road at any particular speed, it could very easily be an accident. Luckily, all my neighbors know I live there and they're familiar with that. My concern is people who are visiting and the type of clientele that might, might come to that particular thing that go up there. Um, so, at the very least, if, if denial is not chosen today, I would like to see some kind of, um, plan to investigate the safety and perhaps improvements on the road, which I, I feel we would need anyways, but certainly we would need if we're planning on increasing the traffic of that road.
Thank you. Alright, is there, okay, I-
I'm, yeah, I'm working.
Okay, tell me your name? Just tell me your name.
Mark Gunn, MRC, last name Gunn.
MRC, got it, okay.
Apologize, I wasn't, I'm Mark Gunn, yeah, you need my address?
I've got your address, 'cause you're with Lori, right?
Uh, correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize, I wasn't here to be able to sign in early, I was in a court proceeding, so, uh, I'm here now. I'll just sum up briefly, not take much of the commission's time, because, uh, obviously you've heard from numerous neighbors here. Uh, first off, I think it's absolutely and abundantly clear that, uh, every single resident living upon Ballentine Road, a member of your county, uh, is in opposition to this usage. Uh, this is a, uh, family community with forested properties, agricultural properties, large acre parcels in your south Salem. Uh, folks move out there for the purpose of having, uh, quiet, seclusion, and good neighbors. And I can say universally, all of these people who I know are good neighbors. I have lived on Ballentine Road, uh, since I was in the eighth grade. I lived on Ballentine Road before it was paved, before there was almost any properties on there. The home in which I live was one of the first large homes built on Ballentine Road and at the time was the largest home built in this county. Now, I grew up on the road, I learned to drive on that road when it was gravel road and when it are today. The neighbors who come here and tell you that it is unsafe road are absolutely correct. Uh, it's, in fact, uh, yesterday, uh, there were children on the road driving. I know they're there because I've lived on the road my entire life. Uh, three days ago, I actually called, uh, one of the neighbors on the phone and said, "Hey, do you realize that your, uh, eight-year-old son has got his bicycle over on the hill?" I couldn't see him until I came over the hill with the sun in my eyes. Fortunately, I know to slow down on the road, because I know that there are children playing there. There have been numerous times where even exercising extreme caution, neighbors pull out of their driveways and I'm required to slam on my brakes to avoid hitting them. And I am familiar with the road, I literally learned to drive on the road. You open up this road to individuals unfamiliar, not only with the road, but with our area, they will have no idea that they need to slow down. The road is a forty-five mile an hour road, they have no idea of the dangers that are there, and I think you're gonna cause some accidents. Now, that's a convenient thing for us to look at, but it is in fact one of the major factors the county needs to consider. Also, when considering an application, you need to look at the totality of it, and I think that there have been numerous people state here, that this application smacks of an individual who is trying to skirt the rules. An individual who is trying to, to, uh, pawl the wool over the eyes of the commission and say, "Oh, no, I'm a resident, I'm gonna run a, a small bed and breakfast in this lovely home that I've moved into." Look at the dates. Ms. Lee apparently changed her driver's license, but did you notice she didn't change it until after she filed her application? Until several months after she filed her application? Uh, Mr. Gavin indicated that he finally saw somebody show up and maybe spend a night in the, in the house yesterday, so that Ms. Lee could come today with a straight face and tell you, "Oh, I live in the home." Folks, if you believe that, I've got a bridge to sell ya. Ms. Lee is not living in the home, Ms. Lee intends to operate a commercial enterprise in a residential property. Not one individual that lives up there thinks that's a good idea. And I can't imagine that you, as commissioners in this county, think that putting a commercial enterprise in that neighborhood is a good idea. Now, the, uh, the county has already denied the application with good cause, and I think there's an, it's an extraordinary remedy for the commissioners to overcome that. There has certainly been insufficient evidence to have, uh, this commission decide contrary to the, the decision order rendered, to allow the operation of this, this, uh, this commercial enterprise. Thank you.
So, I think it's your turn to come back. Do it again, state your name for the record, just so we-
Andrew Cole, counsel for the applicant.
Thank you.
I want to thank the neighbors for coming and, excuse me, expressing their opinions on this matter. We understand their concerns and we share them. If we were a resident on this road and an applicant came intending to open a sex hotel or a Chinese baby factory or a brothel, we would be in opposition to that as well. The number and vehemency of the opposition, um, in a land use matter is certainly something that you may and should consider. However, in this county and in this country, we have something called due process. And we have, uh, criteria that we apply so that decision-makers can apply codes fairly and evenly. And that means that if you meet the code criteria, you can't, uh, be denied a lawful use just because every neighbor around you would prefer that you didn't operate that use. This is particularly true in this idyllic setting where the people who live on Ballentine Low, Road live in this glorious, gorgeous, uh, semi-rural area that is convenient to Salem. And in, in honesty, if they could freeze this moment and never allow any change to it, they would, I would. But, the county has already determined in its code that a bed and breakfast is a conditional use. And if the criteria is met, in fairness, the applicant should be permitted to operate that use. One of the disappointing things that we've heard in this process is people who are opposed to our application telling us what we are going to or intend to do and questioning the integrity of my client, which I think is unfair. And I hope that you've noticed the unfair, unfairness of the types of attacks that are being made. Some of them are simply over the top and we can all simply ignore that. But a couple of points I would like to reiterate. First, operating a B and B for money is a business. It's, it's, it's permitted, it's expected, it's understood. It may not be the type of business like operating a Holiday Inn, but it is somebody who owns property and has the capacity to rent rooms to people, to lodgers, and serve them breakfast and for which they charge a fee. So, your code permits that limited scope of business to occur on Ballentine Road. And if the criteria is met, then in fairness, the applicant should be able to get that. Secondly, there's been a lot of speculation as to whether my client has been dishonest with the county in the application process and with the hearings officer and with you- folks. And we simply deny that. She's testified that she owns a home in Lake Oswego, Oregon, and she is dividing her time between Lake Oswego and Ballantyne Road. The hearings officer found that applicant shall reside in the home to operate the conditional use. Hypothetically, this isn't the case here, but hypothetically, an applicant could purchase this property, live in New York City, go through the permitting process, and not actually reside in the home until the date in which they begin their operation, and they would be in compliance with the code and with the county's requirements of residency in order to operate this conditional use. So it is misleading to point to what happened in December, or January, or March, or anywhere else, and claim that because Ms. Lee does not spend every night up to this point in this home, she's disqualified from this conditional use. And the opponents know that that's a dishonest argument because they're now claiming that she's lying to you or being dishonest in this process. Again, telling her what she has said and what the code means. What she's said is a matter of record, and it's somebody, it shows a businessperson who has bought this property and elects to avail herself of the code permission to operate a bed and breakfast. And as long as she resides in the property, at the time that she opens her bed and breakfast, she's in compliance with the code. And on this and other matters, I would respectfully suggest that you defer to your planning expert, Mr. Fenimore. He will tell you that that's not a requirement. He will tell you that she has met the code requirements in the application. And we appeared to you today in order to expand the evidence in the record to address the concerns of the hearings officer. How is the B&amp;B to be operated day in, day out? And what, if any, conflicts are there with farm or forest uses? And we've heard a lot of testimony, but the only testimony that we heard from an opponent as to impacts was that, yeah, well, my logging activities will not be affected by this B&amp;B. So I would ask you to please concentrate on the evidence that's presented that concerns actual criteria and not the fears and suspicions of folks who are speculating as to what might happen in the future, these list of horribles, which we agree are horrible. But if you were to deny a conditional use permit because someone can come up and say, gee, I'm afraid that six months from now, this is going to be a sex hotel, or whatever it is, you wouldn't issue a single permit for any use in any zone. It is just a terrible way to conduct land use planning. And I'm confident that with your experience and expertise, you know better. Your planning director has determined that even without the additional testimony that we've put on today, that this applicant meets the criteria. And we ask you to, with the additional information that we've supplied you, which we believe satisfies the hearings officer's concerns, for more information, that you reverse that decision, deem the application complete, and simply allow this person to conduct the operation that she is lawfully entitled to conduct. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do. Thank you. How many rooms is this? How many rooms are in...
In the home?
In the home.
Nine, nine bedrooms. I don't know the total number of rooms, but...
I just wanted to verify that. That's what I thought.
That's what I thought, too.
And in addition to that, yeah, is there a guest house?
I don't believe so. I believe there are two apartments that are within the main residence. All of the activities of the B&amp;B will be conducted in the single residence.
So just to clarify, and that's why I asked for a floor plan earlier, so there are nine bedrooms plus two apartments?
Yes.
Sure, Ms. Lee, Ms. Lee, come on.
You need to come to the microphone, please.
I should know that, I don't.
Well, you're the attorney, you don't live there.
Okay, the house have seven bedroom, two guest house, you can say it's apartment, because that, two guest houses, including kitchen, living room, bathroom, and restroom, bathroom. And the seven bedroom is on the second floor, and we only use five of them, there's two of them is not going to use at all, we're going to use for ourselves. So total is five bedroom, going to be bed and breakfast.
If I may, ma'am, sure. So we have seven bedrooms upstairs?
Yes.
Two separate other living quarters that have a bedroom and kitchen and bathroom in each one of those?
Yes.
Are those connected to the house?
It's connect, everything is inside the building.
Okay, and are those facilities upstairs or downstairs, the two guest houses?
One's upstairs and the one's downstairs.
And Ms. Lee, would you show us your driver's license?
I haven't changed mine yet, Sam.
Well, I have, and I'll just say this, I just changed mine recently, and the issue date is still a long time ago. They don't change the issue date when they give you a driver's license change. Okay, and then you probably could produce, you could probably produce a letter as to when this was actually happened from the DMV. Do you want to see it, Sam?
Yes.
It's just like mine tells me. Yeah. Thank you.
The question was whether we could produce a letter attesting to the date in which she applied for her new driver's license with this address on it.
For the change of address.
I'm assuming DMV has that information.
Sure, okay.
I can't swear to it, but it seems like the type of thing they would have.
Any other questions?
I think I'm good.
You have questions? No. I do not have questions either, thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention to this.
So Joe, you're back up. Questions for Joe? You have questions for Joe?
Oh, I will.
Okay.
Yes.
One point before you start, once again, for the record, Joe Fenimore. The LOS comment that you made about the road is actually level of service. If you look in, the hearings officer talks about that on page 11 of the order.
Right.
That it's operating at a level of LOS, level of service A.
What does that mean?
That means it's, let's see, it's the highest level of service there is. So there's adequate capacity is what she found at the end of the...
Slow down, what?
She found that it's operating at level of service A, which is the highest level of service, there's adequate capacity.
What do you mean by highest level of service? What does it mean?
So, for instance, they rate intersections in roads by how long it takes to get through intersections. Level of service A would mean there was no delay. Level of service E would be a failing intersection.
But it doesn't have anything to do with whether or not the road is narrow, whether or not it's hilly, whether or not there are blind corners?
Correct, that is only for amount of traffic.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
For Joe?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'll start, I'm just going to say some things, Joe. So it just so happens that Shelley Warner pretty well captured everything I'm observing here, and I'm just going to say them out loud. I'm not buying the residency and occupancy. I'm not buying the ability to limit the use of facilities, and I know that we don't have any ability to monitor or check perhaps some statements, conditions, I don't know. But I have to ask you, are any of those things, oh, I will say also for the record, I don't see a conflict farm and forest. So, Joe, are those adequate to deny, or can you give me some help in, just because I feel that way, is that the legal answer?
If the board determines based on all the evidence in the record that the occupancy requirement, residency requirement is not being met, you can deny the case based on that, that you believe based on the evidence that's not going to be met, it isn't being met, or you can do a condition of approval requiring it be met.
Whether the use of facilities, because I'm hearing other things, pools, to me, a common sense, I haven't heard of a bed and breakfast that you had to, you could only eat breakfast there, that seems not to be the common definition. Is that our definition?
Our definition, I think, is right out of, is consistent with state law, I believe, usually in the farm zones. It says, shall be operated by the resident of the dwelling.
I have read through it, Joe, I just didn't see what answered.
It basically says, I'll summarize, it says, a bed and breakfast is one meal, one morning meal, and a sleep and, and a sleeping room. And then it says that you're up to five sleeping rooms. If there's more than five, then it's a hotel. Or if there's more than, more than, more than one meal...
So this can easily be more than five, that's part. But now, tell me about like the swimming pool, another meal.
It doesn't specifically address that. It doesn't say you can have a bathroom, that you can use a bathroom. So I think, I think there's a lot of room for the board to interpret what they, what from where, what bed and breakfast means in Marion County. You guys have the ability, the authority to limit it if you choose to, but I think you can also allow more as an accessory, as a residential use, if you choose to.
Okay, I'm pretty, I can make sense on the number of rooms, that limits how much use occupancy. Once they're there, whether they use facilities, I don't care. Still consistent with my, I'm not, I'm not wanting to try to check up and see how many rooms out of the potential being used and the occupancy, it's probably enough for me to deny it, and I'll just leave it there and see what others think.
Do you want to go second?
Yeah, if you don't mind, ma'am, sure. Yeah, my concern is nine rooms, seven of them upstairs, only going to use five of them, who's going to, how do we, how do we figure that out? It becomes a boutique hotel with nine rooms or seven rooms, either way you look at that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, I did hear Ms. Lee, in her testimony earlier today, she wanted to make sure that people could come there and enjoy the amenities. And I think in our code, a bed and breakfast basically says a room and breakfast. You're saying we can leave that open to interpretation if amenities could be enjoyed, or...
I believe so, yes.
But it doesn't say that in, and when I read it, when I read, the hearings officer basically said in, under thirteen.
Yeah.
Under our code.
She does say that. And I don't know whether or not that's in the code or whether that's her definition.
I think it was under thirteen is where I read it.
That's right there, it's just that.
Yeah. So that's my concern, is how do you limit the nine rooms to seven or five? Five or, nine or seven to five, I just can't get there, so...
That's amazing, because we don't talk about these things in advance, we cannot, we're not allowed to by law. And I could have gone down your list.
Oh. Usually you get me the other way.
Right.
Finally, you blur.
So, but let me just separate, because I think there are things that are within the code, and there are things that are just troubling but may not be, rise to a level that the law says that they can or can't do that, and I'm trying to separate those. So the first thing is the road. So I, I don't think this rises high enough to deny the application, but I really think Public Works did not do their due diligence on looking at this road. If it's true that they said they did it by Google, if you could take back my concerns about that, Joe, to the Public Works Department and say that doesn't cut it, all right? And the nature of the road, I've, it's been a long time, but I have driven up that road, and I think I mentioned in the, when we took the appeal, that my daughter's been in that house once. And so she wanted us to go out so we could sit outside the gate and look in the distance and see if we could see it. This was a number of years ago. And it is definitely a difficult road, so, and there's nothing about that that we can weigh in on pro or con at this point, and we'd have to, you know, get someone to go out and do that. But I also wonder, because in other instances of having facilities that people use, just because the fire department provides service there, I don't know whether or not multiple people, the comments in there didn't address whether or not that would change the nature of what they needed to do if they could turn around and so on. But again, I think that that's like a concern, but it's not necessarily a piece of evidence that we would say to use to justify the decision. The second thing that falls in that same category is no outreach to the neighbors. Generally, when people are doing something like this, the first thing they do is try to make connections with the neighbors and explain what they're going to do. We actually requested of people to do that when they come before us in land use hearing. So it is very troubling to me that when I ask that question, you know, I might have met one neighbor, but again, that's a nice to not a have to. Number three is the residency, and that kind of falls on the line for me, I'm not convinced that Ms. Lee is a resident today, or, and then I don't know that we would have any way to determine whether or not she would be a resident in the future, even if that deadline doesn't, if it isn't today and it has to be when the bed and breakfast starts. And the answers, so I just moved out of my house, you all know this, right?
Yes.
Right, and when people ask me, when did you move? I said May 6th. I mean, I don't even have to hesitate on when I moved out of the house, because I remember I was working like a dog to clean it, we had pictures on May 6th, and we had to move out so that they could have the pictures. I mean, so to say, oh, maybe it was January, maybe it was February, I don't know, I mean, that really did not sound credible to me, that someone is actually a resident. And then, of course, we have all the testimony from people that claim that she is not. But again, I think that's a concern of mine. But I think the, the main thing for me is the subordinate use issue, and I brought that up at the outset. I don't know that there's any way that as a county, we could ascertain whether or not the use for the bed and breakfast is going to be subordinate to the use of the residents. And I've been around here long enough, 16 years, to remember when we did a wholesale change, Sterling Anderson was here, of this home-based business code. And I remember us talking about people, a massage therapist having a room off to the side and doing massages and how many people that would take, or a person that had a hair salon and whether or not they could sell hairspray in the window and have a sign and all of those types of things. We never talked about bed and breakfast, that I recall, and we have never had a case that has come to us, at least as a board, on bed and breakfast. So this is kind of a new one for me. In fact, when I saw it, I wasn't even aware that our code included a bed and breakfast. I don't know much about bed and breakfast, except I've seen Groundhog Day many times. And, that was supposed to be a joke. And that in my mind is a bed and breakfast, a home where people come in and out and breakfast is served like they were talking about, not necessarily a mansion that has a pool and an exercise room and all of the other types of things that are in this particular home. And if a person testifies on the record here that she's going to stay in an apartment in the home and that the rest of the home is going to be used for a bed and breakfast, it feels counterbalanced to me. It does not feel like the business is a subordinate use to the residents, but rather, that the residence is subordinate to the business, even if it doesn't technically fall under the definition of a hotel, which I could probably argue that it does. The hearings officer in the report, and we read, Joe, you read this to us, it said, the hearings officer found that the applicant did not provide information on the day-to-day operation of the business, so that information was included in the supplemental materials that we looked at today. And I asked some questions about that. It's still very vague in my mind, and I think that was pointed out by some of the testimony when I asked, how would it be advertised? I mean, it's clear that there's not... I mean, it's clear that there's not been a lot of detailed thought, a wide range in terms of costs, just kind of, it's going to be a high-end bed and breakfast. And when Commissioner Cameron asked about the Public Health Department, that question was almost like, huh? And I have in front of me the statutes for bed and breakfast facilities for food service, which Commissioner Cameron happens to be an expert on.
Was.
Right? And it says a bed and breakfast facility means any establishment located in a structure designed for single residents and structures pertinent to, et cetera, that has more than two rooms for rent on a daily basis to the public. So if we're doing five, then Public Health, now, they could argue that they're not doing it on a daily basis, they're doing it on weekends, but I would think that that falls within the area that they would be needing to look into that, to determine that. So I just don't get the sense that any thought has gone into how this business is going to be run, which then makes me wonder about all of the other pieces to it. And then finally, and this was, and this again is not a legal issue in terms of the denial of the subordinate use is my preeminent legal issue with questions around the residency being the secondary issue, but our lack of ability to enforce. And so it is absolutely true that in the world of Marion County, and I asked you this, Joe, when you set for appeal, you're not going to be knocking on the door saying you only have five people here today. No one's going to know whether or not they're following the rules. It will be the responsibility of the neighbors to call Marion County, to email Marion County, to catch them when they have people there, to determine late at night whether noise is happening or whether something's happening that's untoward or whatever. And that is, we're just not equipped to be able, so your comment was, well, you could either deny it on that basis or you could create a condition. There's a million conditions in this hearings officer report that say things could be met upon condition, who is going to check to make sure that those conditions are ever met? And I don't think it's me, and I don't think it's you either. And, and so I am not inclined to approve or to reverse the denial based on that collection of reasons, but the legal reasons being the subordinate use and the residency requirement. Because again, who's going to determine whether she's residing there?
I would like to see if Jane has any guidance. I know you've been listening intently. I can see you're active at times. Do you have anything? And I'm, first of all, let me ask my question, and make a motion that just basically close a public hearing and denies the application. Is that satisfactory? Is that substantiated enough to be upheld in a legal battle? Anything else we need for the record before we close it?
No, I think, I think your stated grounds are sufficient under our code to uphold the hearings officer's recommendation or findings. I think.
Excuse me a minute. Should I, should that be the motion that we uphold? Thank you. Go ahead. I interrupted.
No. I, I think, I think the residency point is something that Luba will be considering and is very important. I'm also not sure that I see the time element that they were talking about. If she does, if the applicant testified at the time that she was a resident, I think that's something that the board can consider at this time. And if you find that at the time that she's not a resident and she testified that she was, I think that does affect this application today, and that would be grounds to, for your findings today.
Joe's trying to get through.
Yes, Joe.
I think that if you're going to deny the request, then your motion is to deny the request. We will have to prepare an order with additional findings to bring back to you.
Okay.
Not necessarily as, as an item on your board session, but we need to, to, based on the evidence we've heard today, we need to change the hearings officer.
Why don't we do both? Okay. So we'll deny the applicant's appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision.
No, you can't. I think you have to, to deny the request.
I think because the hearings officer found that there wasn't sufficient evidence on, what is it, code 17137, O6C and A, and those have to do with the farm and timber, the forest. And I believe that your findings today are a little bit different.
Right. Okay. All right. So we won't uphold, the hearings officer will deny?
Correct.
All right. You win.
So I'll try to do this right. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We close the public hearing. We deny the application. We ask staff to come up with the.
Findings.
Findings for, for acceptance at a later date. Work?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate you getting involved in the process. And our meeting is not yet over, so if we could ask conversation to go out in the foyer, I know that everybody probably wants to talk to each other.
I just want to know what Andrew learned today sitting here.
And I will read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three commissioners will be present between October 17th and October 24th. We're just completing our board session here at Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow morning, October 18th, Thursday at 8:00 a.m., is our monthly City of Salem, Marion County meeting at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem. That will be followed at noon with the Family Building Blocks Dream Builders Luncheon at the Salem Convention Center. Then on Monday, October 22nd at 8:30, is our weekly calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room, Fifth Floor, Courthouse Square, followed by management update at 9:00, followed by a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer meeting at 11:00 with an executive session if needed. And then at 3:00 on Monday, the 22nd, is a planning meeting for the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council. Tuesday, October 23rd at 8:30, is a meeting of the Community Corrections Board. By the way, all of these meetings are in the Silverton Conference Room here at Courthouse Square, followed at 10:30 by the Marion County Housing Authority Regular Board Meeting. And then at noon will be a meeting of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Steering Committee. And then October 24th, one week from today, at 9:00 a.m., we will be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. Anything else? We're running kind of late, but.
And tummies are growling.
Yes. Well, I've got a meeting. I've got a meeting that was supposed to start at noon.
Straight up noon.
And I was supposed to be in Westland, and suddenly, could, could you just excuse me and say, you know, you don't have to go? That doesn't sound good right now.
What? You're supposed to go where? Westland? Oh, that's the.
The locks. I enjoy it, but I wish I could go by boat.
So given the time, we will forego our chit-chat that we usually have at the end of board session and call this meeting adjourned.